I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council and Public Financing Authority. City Clerk, please, roll call.
Councilman Finney.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Mayor Protem McKeon.
Here.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Councilwoman Vandermark.
Here.
Councilman Gruehl.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
All present.
Alright, tonight's indification will be done by Chaplain James Pike.
Let us pray. We ask you to come among us this evening, oh Lord, and among us in the days ahead into our current civil strife, to be a mediator where friends are not separated, where enemies are reconciled, that we have wisdom and a spirit of neighborliness. For those who are leading us, we pray, that they guide us according to your way, and for our opportunity to be connected to one another and serve one another, for the sake of the common good, for the sake of life to flourish in Huntington Beach, for all who live here, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
City Attorney, do you have anything from closed session?
We do, one item tonight. Mayor, the council, oop, is that working?
Yeah.
Unanimously directed the City Attorney to file a petition to the United States Supreme Court in the case of Huntington Beach versus Newsome, 8 hyphen 23 dash CV 00421 dash FWS. Thank you.
Okay, does any City Council member have anything to say?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
Alright, something for educational value. I've learned that there's a lot of confusion in terms of the age range of what is allowable in the library for a teenager, being limited maybe to the teen section, and can they or cannot go outside of that section? And also in terms of permission, who's allowed to get a library card? And so, just for your educational value, this is right off of our city website, you'll see that it says that teens ages 13 to 17 may apply for a teen card with a valid school ID, driver's license, or government-issued ID card. When applying and signing for a teen card, the presence of a parent or guardian is not required. And so I think that's an important bit of information for parents to understand, that a child 13 years and up can go out the door apart from their will, apart from their consent, and the library will provide for them a card. And this card does not only grant them access to the teen section, though it is called a teen card. This was verified with the community library director, Ashley Wasaki, that they have access to all books in the library, and they can check out all books in the library. So they are not limited in terms of what books they can check out, they are only limited in terms of quantity of books they could check out. That's the educational public service announcement I have for you all.
Sir, with the yellow sign and the brown jacket, yes sir, you've got your one warning, please do not disrupt and yell out from the crowd. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications? Okay?
Yes, we have supplemental.
Oh, we do?
Yes, we have supplemental communications. On the consent calendar, item number 15 to email communications. Item number 16, email communications received regarding the proposed adoption of Resolution Number 202533. Number 17, email communication received regarding the proposed adoption of Resolution Number 2535. Councilmember items, number 29, email communication received from Councilman Williams regarding the proposed compliant filing for possible FPPC violations. Number 29, nine email communications received regarding the proposed compliant filing for possible FPPC violations.
Alright, thank you. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have 94 speakers.
Okay, so please, listen close. Thank you for coming tonight. At the last few council meetings, actually the last couple have been good, but before that, behavior of members of the public have become unruly and has created such disturbance that the meetings have had to be recessed and members of the public removed. It got so bad at the two, three previous meetings that we had to recess and ask the public to leave. As the mayor and chair of the meeting, I am advising the public that disruptive behavior that leads to disturbing or breaking up the meeting will not be tolerated. I am also advising that the penal code provides that every person who without authority or lawful, willfully disturbs or breaks up a meeting may be guilty of a misdemeanor. Yeah, keep going. Yelling from the seating gallery, making crude gestures or use of foul language at the podium from the seating area or within the council chambers is considered disturbing the meeting. If you want to be heard, please come to the podium for public speaking during public comments or fill out a blue request to rearrange a meeting with staff or council members or both. If it is determined that your behavior is disruptive to the council conducting this city business, police are prepared to escort you out and you may be arrested. Your act of disruption is causing, it will be considered cause for you to be removed. And should you have cause or want to directly address a council member one-on-one, don't do it from the podium, we're one council up here and addressing council as a whole. And if you want to do that one-on-one, please fill out a blue slip and arrange that meeting with that council member. Okay? And if you want to use foul language or anything, I've got this little red button that'll mute you. Alright, thank you, and here's the usual advice, advisement of the public speaking. Proper decorum at city council meetings is imperative in order for the public to remain informed about issues pertaining to the city's business. The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to be heard and address those issues in a public forum. Disruptive behavior impeding or delaying our ability to conduct the council's business will not be tolerated. California Penal Code Section 403 prohibits disrupting this meeting and enforcement action will be taken for violations of this law. At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on items may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required to identify themselves by name. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council Administrative Assistance at 714-536-5553 or emailing the entire city council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. Here we go. City Clerk, can you please call the first 20 speakers?
Thank you, Mayor.
And we will be giving each speaker one minute.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call the first 20 speakers. Shammy, Pastor Joe Pettick, Karen England, Barbara Richardson, Julie Ryerson, Hank Hawke, Lynx, Harry McLachlan, Mr. Amory Hammond, Barbara Sider, Carol Das, Jessica Budia, Laszlo Locke, Don McGee, Bill Yarchin, Marilyn Bohm, Brett Bush, Savannah Finch, David, Rick Brown.
Alright, first speaker, please.
I'm up here, and the mic isn't on.
It's on.
Hello, hello, okay.
Do we have a mic to provide? Do you?
Yeah, I have one.
Oh, then go ahead.
Yeah, I want to point out first that this is the only place I go, which is always totally ADA, non-compliant. But this is ridiculous, I'm sitting in back with the whole audience. Now...
I have clear view of you ma'am, just so you feel more comfortable.
The ridiculous part of the children's book ban is that teenagers are restricted to reading the same books as approved for kindergarteners. Why is this so wrong? Because teenagers are involved in sexual activity. CDC studies show that half of teenagers have already had intercourse by the age of 16. Teenagers may desperately need information because they don't want to ask their parents about sex. Browsing library books allows them to find answers to their questions without embarrassment. Teenage girls really need to know that they're targets for sexual predators. They need to be able to recognize it, they need to know how to deal with it, that they can tell someone. Over 8% of girls 12 to 19 will be sexually desolated.
Thank you ma'am, your minute's up. Next speaker, please.
Hello, council, my name is Joe Pettick. Resident here for many years in Huntington Beach. I love my city and I love what you guys are doing. Thank you for what you're doing, standing up to protect our children. So we want to thank you as a community for what you guys are doing. This is a tough job, but according to scripture righteousness, that means doing what's right exalts a nation, and it also exalts a city. You guys are named number one city in the state of California because you're doing what's right, and we're behind you, and we thank you very much. If I still have any time, I just want to say that keep doing what you're doing, put your hand to the plow, don't look back, because this is what's right, this is what's good, and I am so grateful to live in a city like this that stands up for what's right. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
I go?
Hello.
I just, I came, I came here tonight because my kids grew up in this city, and this library is a marquee, not just in this community, but in the country. And the fact that we're sitting here fighting over books that can't even be put in the state prison system, and that you want them in the children's section is absurd. It's not a lie, it's the truth. And the truth is coming out, and this community deserves better than that. Thank God for this council, and thank God that we can do something about it. Everybody at home, vote no. God bless all of you, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
How are you doing? Don McGee, 24-year resident of Huntington Beach. I just want to say that yes/fo on Measure A would give a single librarian the complete right to sexually indoctrinate the kids of this community. How do I know that? Because they've tried it before. Measure B would take away the fiscal responsibility of the city council that's been duly elected to do such a thing, and would put it in the hands of I-don't-know-what. I just want to say that I've got, I've... I just want to say that I've got, I've got an eight-and-a-half-minute video of a petitioner who, whose work actually got this to the vote, lying to me saying that Gracie Van der Mark single-handedly banned, and by banned, I mean, took away completely over 40 books from the library. This, this ballot, these two ballot measures are fallacious. They shouldn't even be on the ballot. I just ask you to vote no, categorically no on both measures and Matthew 18:6, right here on Chad Williams' iPad. It would be better for you to have a milseong put around your neck than to harm one of these children.
Next speaker, please.
There is no porn in the library. There has never been porn in the library. If there were porn in the library, why hasn't Chief Para arrested the library staff? Why didn't the police arrest council members for handing out images from library books they're calling porn during the Easter hunt, an event geared for children 10 and younger? Why hasn't the FBI raided our city as we would have the largest porn ring west of the Mississippi? Why not? Because there is no porn in the library. This nonsense that puberty and sex ed books are pornographic has got to stop. To call them this is false and misleading. Residents, do not be fooled into voting away your rights. Protect your right to choose for yourself what books are appropriate. Protect your right to vote on what happens to your library. Yes on A and B.
Okay, ma'am, just hold one sec. For the folks that have signs out there, remember the ordinances that you hold it in front of yourself. Don't hold it up and block the view of the other people, please. Thank you. Next speaker.
Saturday, I was in a public place with my seven-year-old grandson, speaking with the couple about measures A and B. Suddenly, an enraged screaming woman came up to the, to the couple and without their consent shoved dick pictures from her phone in their faces. She said, "Gracie said this is in the children's section of the library. This is a lie." Then another enraged man screamed at me quoting scripture saying he was sent by Calvary Chapel. I have since discovered that this is happening all over the town. These are the type of deranged, unhinged people the city council would appoint to their parents' advisory committee. Thou shall not bear false witness against thy neighbor. I am pretty sure you can go to hell for this.
Hey, hey. Please, no, no outbursts. Time, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Karen England with Take Back the Classroom and Take Back the Community and I travel the nation trying to stop the sexualization of our kids with taxpayer dollars. And I want to answer so you all know, the answer as to why the obscenity stuff in this pornography is in the schools is because California libraries, public school, public school libraries and universities are exempt from obscenity laws. That's why the books are in there. So they aren't going to get arrested because they're allowed to have them. And I just, so I want to say, I wanted to clear that up from the misinformation. Let's be, be clear, there is never a justifiable reason to expose children to pornography, erotic materials or sexually explicit content, especially behind the backs of their parents. History is not kind to those who blur the lines between education and exploitation. Time and again, we've seen what happens when adults push inappropriate content onto kids. It leads to harm, confusion, erosion of innocence. Parental rights aren't optional. They're, they're [BLEEP]. I appreciate the tolerance.
Next, next speaker, please.
Okay, I'll start. Brett Bush, I've lived in Huntington Beach since 1988. Again, in 1789, April 30th, at a federal hall, George Washington dedicated the United States to God. He and the whole of the early government did so. We as people and citizens of Huntington Beach need to get back to that dedication, putting our children in the safest environment possible. Our children are our greatest heritage and a testimony to how we value them as God does. They indeed are gifts. Yes, they are putting children in harms way so they don't lose their rights, again, at the expense of our youth, all the while stating that they are protecting children from what? What are they protecting them from? Foolishness. Again, internet providers and cable providers offer parental filters and protections so the children will be safeguarded from unseemly content. The city council is acting in good faith, taking steps to mitigate the potential harm, providing a safe harbor in the same vein as a private business does.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm tired of the false claims that the city council is trying to ban books about puberty. So to set the record straight, I'll be reading the books myself. This book is titled, Let's Talk About It. This page of the book teaches children how to stroke their male genitalia for pleasure. It also provides pornographic images. If your camera would like to take a look at that and might have to blur it out. It says, word for word, stroke the shaft of your penis with different pressures and speeds. Try mixing up your grip or switch hands. If you have a foreskin, play with it. Slip a wet finger between it and the glands. Switch things up and avoid constantly masturbating with a tight, hard grip. Try sex toys for bonus fun. Another page of the same book not only shows pornographic images, but actually teaches kids how to find and watch porn, word for word it says. Depending on your age and where you find it, porn can also be unethical or illegal to watch. So do your research. Look up interviews with your fave porn performers. Go to the sites they recommend and pay for your porn. If you vote yes on this, you are either a groomer or a pedophile or both.
Next speaker, please.
Check.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Dear city council members, we can unite to protect our children and preserve our public libraries integrity with reasonable solutions. Division threatens our community, but together we can ensure a safe, thriving library that serves everyone. Let's choose unity and reasonable steps to keep our library a beacon of knowledge and safety for all, like it has been. Chad, you're a youth pastor. You preach to your church that 13-year-olds can get access to a card that has all access, even when their parents object. However, if their parents object, they can get a card that doesn't let them go into that area. That's the truth. Why didn't you tell the whole truth to them? Butch, you just seem to want books with traditional sex ed in them. Don, you have.
Ma'am, remember, address us as one unit.
Mike, okay.
The council.
Don, you like drag queens, storytime, but it's never happened, so maybe they can get one for you. Pat, you're saying we're.
Ma'am, you are warned. You're done. Okay, next speaker, please.
Hello. Our well-loved Central Library is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year. We are fortunate to have our own city library. Many cities in Orange County do not have their own public library. Sadly, we now have council members accusing librarians of housing pornography. This is one of the biggest con games I've seen in my life. If there's porn in our library, as you've indicated on large signs around the city, why haven't the police and FBI removed it? In a month, the library will be starting its popular summer reading program for kids and adults. Last year, about 3,000 participants signed up for the reading challenge. About 15,000 people attended summer events in the library. If our library houses porn, as you suggest, why do so many families use the library? Why won't you take a tour of the library when asked to show us the porn? Why do we have to go to your offices to see your personal collections?
Next speaker, please.
Restricting another's access to information is undemocratic and it's bullying. There is no, there is a nationwide.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Everybody, when you come up to the mic, you're going to have to speak loudly right into the mic because we can't hear you. Yes, it's better. Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. Restricting another's access to information is undemocratic. It's bullying. There is a nationwide conversation many of our troubled young people need to know about. It could save their lives. Transparency and access to accurate information is necessary for parents and children. Social media does not provide it. Libraries, public libraries can. Our Constitution's First and 14th Amendments prohibit censorship. Our city council should know that. We should not be the thought police. I became.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, okay. I saw the images, the young lady presented. That's definitely porn in drawing form, not pictures, but drawn, drawn form. I've seen another, another picture that showed gay sex, that showed spread labia, that showed two guys having sex, gay sex, all kinds of stuff, blowjobs, you know, giving head, all kinds of weird stuff like that on a sheet of paper. And that was taken from books, from the library, from the, from the children's section. Anyway, I'm going to read, I'm going to read a portion out of this book. This is from the library. Reynold watched with disinterested curiosity as Emery rubbed Alma dry with the coarse wool blanket. He started with her arms, rubbed her breasts, the hard pink nipples of her, nubs of her nipples, her stomach, her buttocks, the fire of her red hair between her legs, her legs themselves. Tillie gone, her candle with her, Alma stared blindly into the dark. She imagined Emery and Fabina. She pictured his mouth on her breasts.
There will be a bell that comes, rings when they're out of time completely. So you're out, you're done, sir, but thank you. Okay. Next speaker, please.
I'd like to thank the council for taking a stand on this issue. I thank you for bringing it to light and for reminding us of what true character looks like, to stand up in the face of adversity and to remind us what a spine looks like, to stand there and take the hits. Thank you for bringing this out to the light and showing us things that we needed to see. I'm reminded of the lyrics that say, "Give me 10 men that are stout-hearted men who will fight for the right they adore. Start me with 10 who are stout-hearted men and I will soon give you 10,000 more." This is not just, just about Huntington Beach's library. This is something that's going statewide and nationwide. They're looking at how we're handling this. I thank you for bringing this to our attention and I'm just reminded also of Albert Einstein's quote, "The only difference between genius and stupidity is there are limits to genius." The only thing that we are seeing now is that we're drawing a line by saying no to these two measures and there's going to be a line, I'm going to prove that theory wrong, that we can put a limit on stupidity. This shouldn't be the thing that children see this material. Nobody.
Next speaker, please.
I'm speaking tonight to all the moms of young kids out there. How many of you survived COVID like I did, watching virtual storytime? Anyone else sought refuge in the children's library on a tough day and your kid's pulling 40 books off the shelf and you don't even know what half of them are and you get them all home and all the books are fine. They're totally fine. Let's tell our beloved library and our librarians how much we love them and not, not outsource the management of the library to a private, for-profit company. Let's not vote no. So vote yes on A because I will not co-parent with the government. If this committee is enacted, a committee appointed by the government will decide what books are in the library. I am a mom. I am the pillar of my family. I am a user of the library, just like all you other moms out there. I know you are watching at home and we will not co-parent with the government. We can make our own decisions for our families.
Go ahead, sir.
Youth pastor Chad made all the parents mad by posting his porn signs all over town. "What's this about?" All the children did shout as their innocence seemed suddenly crushing down. That night on the news, he defended all his views. He was actually protecting the kids from porn, but the parents weren't buying the lies that he was trying. They refused to go away and be forlorn. They tore down all his signs. They didn't care about the fines. They cared about their children more than him. He rallied his supporters and he gave them marching orders, "Get your Christian butts on out there and spread my lies." Like the submissive sheep they are, they travel near and far and many of them have joined us here tonight. Their mission is quite clear, stoke up cruelty, hate and fear. Repeat the lies till people believe they're right. To all critical thinkers, don't you believe these lying stinkers? Their issue never was about the porn. It's all about control, taking the freedom is their goal. Vote yes on June 10th and it will make them mourn. Vote yes on measure.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Julie Ryerson. I have emailed each of our board members a minimum of seven times in the past two weeks requesting the removal of all porn signs, which were posted in poor taste and are a blight to our city and an affront to our families. After my sixth email, I finally received a response. Butch, thank you. You reached out and you assured me that the signs would be gone by Monday a week ago. They were not. Andrew, you told me you would do it Wednesday. Last week, we spoke on the phone. Likewise, that did not happen. I have sent the exact locations of the remaining porn signs to every one of you and I'm here tonight to ask, on behalf of many members of our community, please read my email, look at the addresses, remove the porn signs, for the love of God.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight to reaffirm my support for the continuing fight against high-density development. The time has now come to take the case to the Supreme Court. I am personally planning to travel to Washington to hear the oral arguments in the case. In my opinion, the city has the law on their side and the facts on their side and the state is pounding the table. But I'm not listening anymore. I'm listening to the people of Huntington Beach. The people of Huntington Beach do not want high-density development.
Forever, we Huntington Beach parents have been shaping our children's knowledge of sex and gender. We use sources in our city's library and we've been successfully raising our children without government deciding for us how to do it. Then, all of a sudden, the city government barges into the room uninvited and tells us that we cannot be trusted to properly guide our children's reading. Now, parents need the government to intervene and protect us from the library. It gets worse. Our nanny-city government has now decided that we cannot talk to our very young children about sex unless we talk about porn. Our children can't go anywhere without seeing that word displayed in front of elementary school. So a six-year-old is forced to start associating sex with porn. That's just plain wrong. You are, you are elevating the city's authority over the authority of the family on very personal matters that are none of your business. Your opposition to measures A and B
For many months, I've listened to allegations
For many months, I've listened to allegations of porn in our library made by our city council and a few residents. Librarians have been called pedophiles and groomers who kept those books in the children's section to appeal to perverts or to expose young kids to inappropriate material. I'm a retired probation officer who worked in LA and Orange Counties for over 31 years. During that time, I supervised both adults and juveniles, both the perpetrators and victims of child molestation. Do you know who the offenders were? Stepfathers, uncles, grandfathers, and even clergy. Adults the kids knew, library books were not involved. Don't believe the lies. It's fear mongers who are trying to take away parents' rights. Vote yes on propositions A and B.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Burns and city council members. We're at a crossroads here in Huntington Beach defining good, voting no on A and B versus evil, voting yes on A and B. The voters are being lied to, and they seem to be confused on how to vote, so it's time to provide clarity on exactly who these people are from the left. These people supporting, voting yes on A and B support woke agendas, the DEI initiatives. They support open borders, illegal immigration, resisting efforts to deport criminal aliens. They support high taxes. They support fraudulent government spending and pro-abortion. They support Antifa, socialism, BLM, and communism. The people that vote yes on A and B, they support-
Hey! I need quiet. Go ahead.
They support men playing in women's sports. They want pride flags and government properties. They support burning Tesla cars and dealerships. And they're, they're okay with murdering insurance company CEOs. They're in favor of limiting the Pledge of Allegiance in schools and against school prayer. And they are in favor of weaponizing the FBI, the DOJ, and Homeland Security against Republican political opponents when they are in power. So remember, vote, vote, protect, protect our kids. Vote no on ye-
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor and city council, thank you for everything you're doing for the city of Huntington Beach. We appreciate you so much for standing up for parent rights and the rights of children. My story is short and sweet. I was exposed to pornography when I was about nine years old. It completely confused me about what male-female relationships are and how to operate normally in a sexual relationship in my life. And it took many, many years to get that right. And so, I, in order to protect the eyes, the ears, the minds, the hearts, the souls of our children, we need to protect their eyes as minors. And I'd just like to quickly read a short definition of pornography. "The depiction of erotic behavior, as in pictures or writing, intended to cause sexual excitement." This is not about First Amendment rights, this is about pornography.
First off, I would just like to thank Chad for inspiring so many of us community members to come out tonight to our city council meeting, myself included. The parking lot is packed, it's amazing. I'd also like to thank Chad for bridging the gap between the left and the right for something we can all agree on. Over the last few weeks, we've all gotten to know Chad a little bit better through his overzealous Facebook posts. We know that he's a Navy SEAL who believes it's okay to tread on the individual liberties and rights of parents and guardians of minors. He is a youth pastor who wields his god like a weapon and spreads the word porn all over his city, particularly around elementary schools, my child's included. But the biggest thing I've learned about Chad over the last few weeks is that he is proudly the scapegoat for Mayor Pat Burns and the rest of their group as they use fear, religion, and our children as a means to trick us into privatizing our libraries.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
We're gonna call the next-
You're disrupting, ma'am, you are disrupting.
We're gonna call the next 20 speakers. We'll be calling the next 20 speakers when you-
Uh, we've got one more coming up.
Hi, everybody, how you doing? I'm just gonna say that I was raised with prayer in school, every day, religiously, and then my priest raped me when I was 14. Had I had the ability to have the book that explained everything to me, I could've explained to my mother what was happening, but that didn't happen. So guess what? A year later, my cousin's husband did it to me again. So, we prayed, we prayed, and he still stuck his thingy in my thingy, 'cause that's how you people want it. The little clown man, where did the man hurt you? Come on, people. Our kids are growing up. We need to treat them like young adults. Let them have the availability to learn what they need to learn. They're not learning porn. You go to the liquor store, you get porn. There's backbooks all over the place. Go to the magazine shop, grab any one of them. You don't have to get it at the library because it doesn't exist. Thank you.
Ma'am, we're, you're not on the list, are you?
No.
You haven't been, your name has not been called, called?
None of these people's names-
Okay, then just get, you can wait in line. We're gonna call the next 20, and you can be first in line, but we're gonna take a little break while the next 20, uh, get called.
Wait.
You can wait. Get in the front of line, I don't care, but you, we're gonna wait. We're gonna take a little break.
Okay, for the next 20 speakers, when you get in line, please exit the library to the top of the library and make a left to get in line. Please feel free to say your name before you begin speaking. Colleen Kanan Durham, Donald M. Delamater, Guest P., Kathleen Duran, Mike Posey, Laura Lindsey Click, Beth Culver, Lisa Musley, Russell Neal, Kathy Carrick, Deborah, Ed Graham, B. Sharp, Jeanne Parrish, Sherrell, Diana, Stephen Quinn, Dionne, Ann Palmer, Billy Maddox, Jerry DeVore Donahue, Brandy DeSeo. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Christine Browning, born and raised in the city of Fullerton. I moved here about 13 years ago, but not before. I recalled three out of five of my city council members. So, I do listen and I do watch, so I've got my eye on you. But I'm here tonight because, Chad, you have got some-
Please don't address, you gotta count, I ask you, please address the council member, the council.
Okay.
If you want addressing, a blue card.
Okay, for the council, one of you has some cojones, and I do appreciate you for getting this discussion out there, because you know what? We need to talk. Whether we're left, whether we're right, we need to get together, and we need to figure this out. I personally am no on A and B because I know what's up, and I do my investigations, and I'm just hoping that the other people around here do. We're in this beautiful city. Let's just get along. Why do we gotta spread so much hate? I hope you have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm one of the parents who saw, who was driving their children to school and saw the porn signs. I had to have a difficult conversation with my kids about this topic that I wasn't ready to have. Our library has safeguards and parental controls and complaint forms, and this should be adequate to protect our children. This is about the truth, freedom, and community. Vote yes on A and B to protect our children, our library, and our values. And you took away my First Amendment right. I should've been able to speak.
Next speaker, please. And remember, folks, they want, they, they'd like you to come out the top of the, uh, out of the theater, not back through the door you came.
Tina Toulouse, lifetime resident of Huntington Beach, and I speak in favor of A and B. My mother was a, held a master's in information and library science, and she was a tenured federal librarian. Aside from the fact that I'm very curious as to the standards that will be held for this supposed group, my other concern is one out of humanity for one city council member. His declaration, ad nauseam, of his veteranship. I won't criticize someone such as yourself, so in the, so dire in the need of medical attention. Instead, I offer hope, words of hope, as a fellow community member. First, you're not alone in your illness. Back in 2011, the nation watched as actor Charlie [BLEEP].
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please. You're out of time. You're out of time. Next, next speaker, please. Yeah.
Good evening, Huntington Beach community. I'm Gina Clayton Tarvin, your elected school board trustee for the Oceanview School District. As board clerk, a teacher, and a mother of a minor child in Huntington Beach, I rise to voice my deep concerns. It's come to my attention that Councilman Chad Williams is in violation of Huntington Beach Municipal Code 207080 by having two candidate-controlled committees at the same time. One, Chad Williams for City Council 24, 2024. And two, protect our children with Councilman Chad Williams vote no on A and B. Both are candidate-controlled committees, and this is a gross violation of Huntington Beach Municipal Code. City Clerk, I call on you to investigate this misconduct and take corrective action to restrain Mr. Williams from continuing to violate Huntington Beach law. Furthermore, Chad Williams has violated Section 312B of the city charter by hanging repulsive and morally reprehensible sexualized so-
Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
Okay, I wanna be absolutely clear that I used a text-to-type or text, text-to-speech app to do this next event. I found this book in the library, in the young teens section. It is called "The V Word." The caption or the subtitle or the title of this chapter is called, um, neck, well, I have to get it. Muff, ear muffs for muff, muff diving. This is in your library, and I want you to imagine it was put to a child's voice because every child who goes in the library can access this section.
Ear muffs for muff diving. By Chelsea Clama. Page 94. My tongue separates the lips of her vagina, and I find her clit. At least I think it's her clit. It's this hard little ball thing.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Beth. If you've ever seen these books, you can't unsee them. When they first came out, I saw them in the Santa Ana Library. I was shocked, and these drawings and this behavior is all done in cartoon form. That's deceiving. This isn't about the First Amendment. It's not about your liberties or your rights. It's about our responsibilities to these freedoms that we have. And as adults, we should be able to make that discerning decision how our children are exposed to certain things. We don't want our, the movies have R ratings, the TV has R rating, and there's a disclaimer before these programs. Why not the library? If you don't understand that, you're either ignorant or you're a plain hypocrite. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Musle, and I am here to tell the truth. I wanna read a little excerpt from a book that is in the junior high section, and we're not trying to get rid of the books, we just want to place them in the adult section. "I cracked my eyes just a slit as he sat on Kelly's bed and pulled her onto his lap. He smelled of brute and wild turkey, his peculiar potpourri. I love you so much, my little flower. Daddy needs something for my little girl, my sweet rose, will you give it to me? He lifted her gently, sat her down on the bed beside him. Then he opened the snaps on his fly and the flap pajamas. It stood as stiff as a stalagmite. How much daddy loves you, show me you love me too. Touch it." He closed her hand around it. "I know it sounds bad, but I wanted to touch it too. I didn't know what it meant, only that it made daddy happy. I wanted to make him happy too. That's right, that's right." His voice rocked in rhythm with his body. "Oh, yes, my Kelly loves me, little flower." That belongs in the children's section?
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, members of the Huntington Beach citizens, citizens of Huntington Beach. My name is Mike Posey. I'm a longtime resident, former mayor, former city council member, and I'm here tonight to urge a no vote on both Measure A and B. I don't have too much original to add on Measure A, so I'm gonna focus on Measure B. And the initiative represents an affront to the city council's budget approval authority. In the ballot language, it explicitly states that outsourcing is prohibited, prohibited if it is intended purposes to achieve cost savings and/or transfer wholesale management. The city already engages in outsourcing for cost savings and best-practice consulting. Budget authority is explicitly the exclusive province of the city council. This is memorialized in the voter-approved city charter. Section 604 reads in part, "At the conclusion of the public hearing, the city council shall further consider the proposed budget and make any revisions thereof that it may deem advisable and/or before the last day of the fiscal year, and shall adopt the budget with revisions, if any." Section 605 reads in part-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Don Dalemonder, and I wanna read a excerpt from one of the books that's in this library. The name of the book is "I'll Give You the Sun," and it starts off with here, "I just turned 14, he was almost four years older than me. Then we stopped talking and he kissed me. One first kiss, I kissed him back. His lips tasted salty, he smelled like coconut suntan lotion. In between kisses, he started saying my name like it was me scalding thing in my mouth. Then he slipped the cups of my yellow bikini top to the sides and swallowed hard as he looked at me. I moved the fabric place in place, not because I didn't want him to stare at me like that, but because I did it and it embarrassed me. It was the first time any guy had ever been, seen me without a bra or anything. My cheeks flamed. He smiled, his pupils were big and black, his eyes so dark, as he lowered me into my back in the sand and slowly pushed the fabric of my top again to the sides. This time, I let him, I let him look at me. I let my cheeks flame. I could hear his breathing in my body."
Next speaker, please. Thank you, sir. Time's up. Thank you.
From the teens section of our library. She watched, she wanted to touch Kath's skin. She tugged at the hem of Kath's blouse out from her skirt and slid her hands beneath it. And finally, she felt the warm skin of her back and the quiver of Kath's body as she touched her. Kath drew back briefly and reached for the buttons of Lily's blouse, asking, "Can I?" Lily helped her unbutton it, and then Kath put her hand on the bare skin of Lily's waist, and Lily closed her eyes. Kath's hands slid up over her ribs and cupped the curve of her breast, and her thumb trailed electrically over the outline of Lily's nipple through her bra. And then she pushed her leg between Lily's thighs, and Lily gasped at how it felt."
Time. Ma'am, just one second, please. I'm gonna ask you again, there will- There will be, when the time is completely out, the buzzer will ring. Please let the buzzer ring before you start yelling time and disrupting the meeting. You're not a timekeeper, okay? Please, the next speaker.
I'm Lindsay Click, HB mom and children's librarian in public libraries for 15 years. Each year, thousands of families attend HB Public Library's award-winning storytimes. Afterwards, they check out hundreds of thousands of books they want from the broads collection selected by professional librarians like me, and they are happy. So why is there such a disconnect between actual library users and this city council? Maybe they are using the library wrong. Here's a little song to help everyone, from council members to preschoolers and on up, have an amazing experience at the library. If you don't like a book, close it up. If you don't like a book, close it up. If a book is not for you, this is what you ought to do. Close it up, close it up, close it up. Let's keep trusting parents and librarians working together, not politicians working to divide us. Libraries bring our community closer. Let's not let a few bullies tear us apart. Yes, I'm AMB.
Next speaker, please.
I would say good evening, but it's not. You are putting porn signs up more and more across our streets at this very moment. Thank you. Hey, Don, remember April 21st?
Please don't address the whole council.
The guy that sounds like son. April 21st, 1:00 a.m. in the morning, yelling at me, "Hey, Paula, I'm going to put my signs on top of yours. I'm maneuvering your sign on top." Little did I know that you were actually going to do that. Andrew Gruel came up to me as well when you hang-
Hold on. Take a break. City Attorney, point of order. Are we not, is the rule not that they address the complete council?
You should address the council, but to the extent they need to mention names, they can.
Thank you. Family fun, Easter egg hunt. People had a booth there, people that are in the center right there giving away porn signs as well. You are all up there as liars, disgusting, and engineers of divisiveness. You are manufacturing a problem that doesn't exist. Shame on you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, city council members. My name is Mabel McDonough. I'm a fourth grader at Peterson Elementary School, and I would like to talk about the no on A and B posters. One says, "I'm just a kid, protect me." The other, "Protect kids from porn." I have many things I could say about these posters, but I would like to focus on the way they say protect. I'm confused on what you're trying to protect us from. Hugging and kissing, I assume are two, and I would like to give a pointer that hugging and kissing are in almost all our daily lives. So how could you say protect? Protect us from what?
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Freedom is a yes vote for Measures A and B. Freedom is the ability to be free and to think, feel, laugh, and dream through accessibility. Freedom is readers choose, not political appointees. Freedom is enriching knowledge and awareness without oversight. Freedom is encouraging conversations about what you read. Freedom is doing what's right. Freedom is the opportunity to disagree, to learn, and to expand one's worldview through literature. Freedom is my choice, not yours. If we were, if we are in the land of the free and the home of the brave, why is city council so afraid of what's been in the library all along these years? Hmm. We love our library, so vote yes on Measure A and B.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council. Stephen Quinn here. Tonight, you have heard or will hear many excerpts from the books in question. Proponents of Measures A and B argue that this material doesn't actually constitute pornography. I submit that in some insidious way, it is worse than mere pornography, for while posing is some sort of educational tool, is actually actively advocating and inciting sexual experimentation in its young readers. It may not be pornography, but it certainly functions as a gateway to it. The core of this dispute is the issue of parental authority. Are parents still entitled to decide what is good for their own children, or are those choices to be made by a cult of experts? Your faith in experts may still be intact. Mine is not. One particularly lurid book describes the rape of an adolescent girl by her own father, witnessed by her twin sister. It brings to mind the words of Paul in his letter to the Philippians. Finally, brethren, whatever things are true, whatever things are noble, whatever things are just, whatever things are pure, whatever things are lovely, whatever things are good, report, if there is any virtue, and if there is anything praiseworthy, meditate on these things. Does the book I just mentioned strike you as noble, pure, or lovely? Would you want your child meditating on it?
Hi, my name is Jeannie Paris, and I'm here to address a few issues. Let's tell the truth about special election on June 10th. The proponents of yes on A and B want you to believe that the books have been banned. This is false. Books have simply been relocated to an age-appropriate section of the library, just as a movie rating system. If children want to have access to these books, their parents can get them on an all-access card in the library. It's very simple. The yes proponents want you to believe that the sexually explicit books in the library are simply puberty books. I implore everyone to look at a book called Let's Talk About It. This is a book that is currently in the kids' section of the library. You can verify that on the library's website catalog. This book has hardcore graphic images of sexual intercourse, that if these images were placed on a movie screen, a child would not view them without being accompanied by an adult. It's extremely sexually graphic. The parent guardian review committee is an added layer of protection to review children's books that are procured by the library to ensure they are placed in the age-appropriate section of the library. Shouldn't that be our default position?
Next speaker, please.
Ann Palmer. I'm going to read from a book called Identical. It is in the library. It's a YA book, and you can find it on Libby. It is there. And I want you to know that if you vote no, you can still access this book for your 13-year-old. You can get the book one at a time, or you can give your 13-year-old an all-access card if you vote no. It just takes these books out of the hands of kids that shouldn't see them. So, "There was something different in the air. Rage, lust, sorrow, perversion. This wasn't her daddy. This was a demon, his evil, hard, and sharp as a steel blade, ready to slice into her. It did. His attack was brutal, bloody, wordless. Please, please, no, daddy, no. It hurts." Again, if you want your 13-year-old to read that book, you can still do so with an all-access
Next speaker.
Good evening, city council. So proud to see you all up there.
Speak, I can hardly hear you, ma'am.
Good evening, city council. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, a little closer to the mic, probably.
Okay. My name's Dion Cronkite. I'm a longtime resident of Huntington Beach, a homeowner, mother, grandmother, and I applaud the continued fight you guys are taking against citizens legally predicted and woke government grooming system that continues to prevail over the recent years in government. These books in the public schools and library are providing additional avenues for grooming for youth, desired actions of the pedophile-minded abuser and sex traffickers, as this is a normal way of life, and it is not. These actions have long emotional and mental effects on their youth and have destroyed families. Our world today is protecting the abuser more than the child.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kathy Carrick, and I'm here to ask you to please vote no on Measures A and B. Psychologists will tell you that exposing young, impressionable minds to sexually explicit material can be deeply damaging, stripping away their innocence and potentially leading to confusion, anxiety, depression, and even exploitation. Do we place books about quantum physics or international politics in the children's section? No, because children's minds are not capable of fully understanding these concepts, and neither are they capable of understanding mature sexual themes, instructions, and ideologies. Let us work together to maintain a safe space where children's young minds can flourish and where parents can feel confident that their children are in a safe and supportive environment. Our children deserve nothing less. Please vote no on Measures A and B.
Hello. When Camel cigarettes were using Joe Camel as their cartoon mascot, people understood that they were using the cartoon figure to appeal to children and market their product to children. And that's what these cartoon images in these very sexualized books showing children having sexual intercourse or oral sex with each other. That's what they're doing to children at a very young age to try to market this to them and bring them into this world years and years before they're ready for it. And also, I'd like to point out that if you found out your local Catholic priest was reading these books to the altar boys, you'd have a different opinion about it.
Hello, my name is Kathleen, and I want to say I'm very disappointed with the city council. Very disappointed with the city council. You are passing rules that are really not your job. You should be paying attention to our infrastructure. You should be paying attention to where the money should go. You're wasting $1 million on this special election because of your egos. Why because of your egos? Because you just have to get these ordinances in there because we said so. So I am extremely disappointed with this city council, and I want to say I was disgusted with the signs all over my city with the name porn all over it. I would consider that a criminal offense, and you should be held criminally responsible for it. And it's, you disgraced our libraries. You have disgraced our city. Please, people, vote yes.
I'd like to thank the council for this time. I'm here because of my grandchildren, your children and grandchildren. I'm here because a lot of people don't do research and think this is about banning books. The truth is, is we're not banning books. We're just trying to keep them in the appropriate section, away from children. Our children face enough trouble as they go through puberty without being confused sexually. As a parent, grandparent, we should be fighting for the same thing, which is to protect our children, to protect our parental rights. I believe in my heart, people may be confused or just believe what they hear. Our children is our responsibility. It's my desire we should all be in favor of debate and want this nation to turn from evil. We should be able to act like adults and agree we can disagree without hatred, being rude, or violence, and act like children. The government has already intervened by allowing this kind of material in a public place. There are none so blind as he who will not see. Actions speak louder than words. Behavior is telling. In the end, we will all be judged. The Lord is watching.
Next speaker.
Good evening. Measures A and B are brought to us by the very group that was screaming no charter amendments last year when our voter ID passed. Now they want two changes. Measure B will establish a mid-level city staffer with sole power to control all aspects of our library without any accountability to our elected city council and attorney, who answer directly to we, the people, the citizens, the taxpayers, the voters of HB. The petition gatherers lied to people to get signatures. They said the city council wanted to privatize the library when that issue never came up for a council vote. Now, they want an unaccountable, independent, untouchable library czar to direct all aspects of the library like a dictator. We say no to Measure B and its sister Measure A. Measure A completes the power grab away from the HB residents, who pay taxes to fund the library, and away from officials elected by the voters. The posters for A and B lie.
I just want to say, it is pretty scary coming out here today, and I know a lot of residents too have been scared to voice their opinion. And there's just too much hate. We all want to protect our kids. It's the bottom line, and I know that this is just used as a political move. It's been tried all over the country and has failed multiple times. I'm here, I support Measures A and B. I implore everyone to vote in support of them as well. Furthermore, I ask that everyone, you know, check out the library, go check out the kids' section themselves, go see for themselves. I had to say, just doing a lap around here, it's very peaceful and comforting, which is the opposite of this room I've seen today. I think we really need to focus on the real issues that HB is facing. There's a precarious financial position facing $24 million in deficit. Huntington Beach has developed as an angry town, where there's White Lives Matter protests and other events like that, and there's riots and whatnot. There's a budget conflict between resident services and increased tourism. I think we should focus on these instead of these culture wars and try to split our residents together.
Next speaker, go ahead.
Jerry Donahue, 50-year resident of Huntington Beach. Vote yes on Measures A and B. It has been 14 months since the ordinance creating the parental advisory board was passed by a one-vote margin. If this was such a good idea, why isn't this board in existence? Is it because 21 members on any committee is too large a number to accomplish much? Mr. Mayor, you said that in your opinion, this committee would be looking at only six books a year. Protect Huntington Beach had to gather 13,000 signatures to get on the ballot. This council has chosen to spend $1.2 million in a special election rather than waiting for a general election, all to determine if 21 non-librarians can pass judgment on six books. Huntington Beach can do better. Please vote yes on A and B.
So first of all, I'm personally voting yes on A and B. Second of all, I want to talk about some of the misinformation that has been coming out of this council regarding the library. First of all, we keep hearing that there's porn in the children's library, that our children have access to porn, but some of the books that are being listed are not in the children's library. They're in the adult section of the library. So, and if we're talking about, well, the children have the ability to get a library card and they can go into that area. I was at the meeting in 2023 when the city staff suggested an alternative to this, where parents could choose for their kids to have a library card that only allowed them to check out books from the children's library, and Gracie, you voted that down. So I'm wondering where that's happening. Second of all, I know that I personally watched the Sunday sermon at Calvary Chapel where Karen England, a Tennessee-based, far-right darling who is a paid consultant and a member
Hello, my name is Melissa. I was born and raised in Huntington Beach. My daughter is the fifth generation of my family to live in this city. The public library is a place for our community, which is made up by people with different backgrounds, cultures, and religious beliefs. The books in the library are currently reviewed by a librarian with the Masters in Library Sciences, allowing the city council- Allowing the city council to each choose three friends to make up the board controlling what books are appropriate for the library would not represent the diversity in our community. Our council is made up by one political party that all go to the same church. If your church is so concerned about the books children are reading, then your church should consider building their own library, where they have complete control over every book in it. This is about virtue signaling and control. The council's disgusting publicity stunt of wall-pray appearing our city in signs with the word porn in giant red letters.
So are we going to call the next 20?
Yes.
Are we going to call the next 20?
Yes. The next 20 speakers, please exit the back of the library, make a left, and line up in the hallway. Delane Bailey. Keith Jorgensen. Patricia Pappas. Robert Gray. Dennis. Dennis. Jasmine Schuthy. James Uter. Frank Daniels. Brian Venn. Catherine Stock. Ken Inoue. Nancy. Melanie Brady. Pat Goodman. Vivian. Mary Jo. George Washington. Valentina Bankhead. Bethany Webb. Mabel M. Please feel free to state your name if you'd like to speak.
This book is in the young adult section. It's called "The Haters." I heard her opening some little crinkly package, and I felt her put the cool plasticky middle of the condom snugly on the front of my dick like she was shrink-wrapping it, and I felt her fingernails through the plastic like the legs of a crab, fingernailing their way down my dick, and she rose up a little and adjusted her panties and breathed harder and opened her mouth, and her breath was like vegan fritters and farm animals, and her eyes were dark, and I saw them very clearly somehow, and her hair was stiff with chlorine and itched like straw on my face. The moment she came, the moment she put me inside her, I came. I mean, the exact moment. Fuck, I said, and I curled up around her like a snail and kept coming about 100 times, and I said...
Good evening, council. Good evening, council, and thank you for having this discussion this evening. My wife and I raised two children that are both in their 20s now, and we did not co-parent with the government. Never did we ever have an urge or need to show them any type of explicit language or illustration during our talks regarding reproduction or sexual education. These books are more of an indoctrination, an introduction to erotica and to normalize this type of behavior, none of which is normal or morally acceptable in my world. This is perverse and exploitive at best. I will be reading From Me and Earl and the Dying Girl, which is being made into a movie. Hey, Earl, I'm going to eat her pussy. Oh, hey, did you even know how to eat pussy? Not really, but never really sat down and, son, one day you're going to have to eat pussy, but did you know how to eat a butthole? Nothing of this is any type of appropriate...
Next speaker, please.
Thank you. City council, and especially to the loudest section up there.
Ma'am, you got to just try to direct your conversation. I'm sorry about that.
All I'm saying is that the things that have been said here are vile and evil. Vile and evil, that's the nicest thing I can say. I am or was a victim. I have grown out of that because I was raped at the age of four. Four years old, people. Okay? I've never forgotten it. I am now 80.
This way, ma'am.
I am 80 years old, and I have never forgotten a moment like that. So people that laugh and jeer and make fun of this, they are evil. Anybody that promotes and even goes to laugh at something like that, where, who are you? What are you, besides evil? It's beyond me that anybody could [BLEEP] be that way.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Robert Gray. I'm a 15-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm going to read an excerpt from a book called Court of Mist and Fury. It's in your library, and it's a, kids have access to this book. His tongue swept my mouth again, in time to the finger that he slipped inside of me. My hips undulated, demanding more, craving the fullness of him, and his growl reverberated in my chest as he added another finger. Tamelin, I begged. He palled my breast, his thumb flicking over my nipple. I cried out. He burned himself in me with mighty stroke. One more. His fingers slid into me again, and he growled in approval, and the wetness between my thighs, both from him and me. They won't, he said against my skin, positioning himself over me again and sliding down my body, trailing kisses as he went.
Thank you, sir. Next person, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Dennis Pappas, and I'm a voter in Huntington Beach.
Hold on, sir. Hey, please don't disrupt anymore. Sir, I'm talking to you right now. Please don't disrupt anymore, please. Okay, go ahead, sir.
The term "book banner" is being weaponized to smear anyone who dares challenge the push to sexualize our kids. Let's be clear: Every book we're talking about in Huntington Beach libraries is freely available, sold online, in bookstores, and accessible to adults and minors alike in public libraries. But here's the catch: Minors only access them with parental permission. Because parents, not unelected librarians and progressive activists, should decide what's appropriate for children, parents need to be involved when talking about sexually inappropriate materials in a public library. This isn't about banning books. It's about protecting students from taxpayer-funded pornography. It's time to draw the line. Vote no on A and B. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Sulting, and I was someone that started, I found porn and writing when I was 12, and it really messed up my life. So I found this book. I'm here to vote no on A and B. I found this book, this book is from the minor section of the library. I have a hard time reading it, but I'm going to read it. I had previously topped someone who clearly enjoyed it, but he had been enjoying anal sex before I ever came along. He knew what to expect. I didn't. As an avid porn watcher, the only thing I knew about anal sex previously was that it was painful, or at least played up as such on cameras. Nervous and drunk, I listened to God on my stomach. He got on top and slowly inserted himself into me. It was the worst pain I think I ever felt in my life. He then added more lube and tried again, which felt better, but not by much. He began stroking his, stroking motion. Eventually, I held a mix of pleasure with the pain. I can't say that I didn't enjoy it, because I did, but it was painful for sure. I'm sorry, guys, this is porn, and... Yeah.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Catherine Stock, and I'm a registered nurse by profession, having worked in pediatrics, and I have seen the devastating effects that pornography has on our youth and our children. And so I'm asking you all to vote no on A and B. Supporters of exposing minors to sexually explicit books often argue that students need to see themselves in these graphic books. In reality, many students have experienced sexual abuse or trauma, as you have mentioned earlier, and seen this conduct could re-traumatize them. They require professional counseling, not surprise exposure through explicit literature tucked between library shelves. Even worse, some of these books push sexually progressive agenda and are being used without oversight.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Frank Daniels, and I live in Huntington Beach. And first of all, I want to thank the city council for taking action in this. And so I support a no vote on A and B. Now, here's one of the books that's in the library right now, okay? I'm going to read a little bit out of it for you. Handheld wrapped around his erection. You lean up to kiss him. The rest of your clothes come off, and James's. You are together in your bed, and he is naked before you in a way you have never seen this clearly. His dark, flat chest, the bright black cords of his pubic hair surrounding his erection. If wet-tipped and urgent, you smoke it with your fing, you stroke it with your fingers, makes a [BLEEP].
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Brian Vaeff, resident here in Huntington Beach. And you might want to put your kids to sleep because there's bad word coming on your screen right now. And I, I'm here, I am here as, you know, there's a lot of confusion. I get it. There's a lot, you know, yes, no, all that kind of stuff. But if you're MAGA and if you want to make America great again... If you want to make Huntington Beach great again, then you will join me in voting no on A and B. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jignish Padhyar. You know, coming to city council meetings, they're more entertaining than TV, but on tonight's episode of Huntington Beach SVU, the Special Victims Unit is out on full force. The victims are working in the dark to tear down our signs while we work in the light to put them back up. There is meaning there, if you can find it. The same victims who hijack body positivity just so it only applies to the obese simply forget and skip over children when they have gender dysphoria. Rather than reaffirm an impressionable child that they are beautiful the way they are, they instead indoctrinate them into an impossible reality. That is the hypocrisy of the left. Those in the audience mocked our mayor for declaring Huntington Beach parental rights a no city, but are now fighting for parental rights? These lies and outrageous delusions are losing their luster. The public is waking up, and we will not back down, even to the supermajority simps of Sacramento. It's no wonder that they cannot distinguish the difference between educating and sexualizing children. They are more outraged by the word porn than the visual displays of it in the children's books. They choose to sacrifice the well-being of our children to the altar of their own hubris. Vote no on Measure A and B.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, hi. I'm Melanie Brady. I'm a longtime resident of Huntington Beach. Okay, my name's Melanie Brady. I'm a longtime resident of Huntington Beach. I grew up here, my kids were raised here. We love the library. We spent hours here in summers. We spent so much time here, it was a huge part of our life. My daughter volunteered here. I love the library. I had so much I wanted to say as an educational psychologist, as a teacher in human development design courses, working in higher ed, as a healthcare professional, which are my careers, and nothing matters after all the tensions that I've heard. One side says it's not there, the other side says it's there. I will just say this, I will just say this, that what I heard read, I think should have an extra review. So I don't see a problem with an extra review as a professional in education, as healthcare at all, and I would say vote no on A and B, because there's nothing wrong with the extra review, and I can't even speak to it's not there, it's there. So I will just end with that, and thank you very much.
Next speaker.
I have enjoyed visiting our wonderful and very pleasant libraries in the city for the last 42 years that I've lived here. I've also been proud of our Huntington Beach libraries. The librarians and the volunteer staff have worked hard in each of our libraries to monitor and organize the books that come into the libraries and place them in the appropriate library locations. Parents accompanying their young children and monitor the books that they feel are okay for their children to read. It is comfortable that the parents have this oversight, and I feel confident in them. Please keep the library system as it is, and I recommend to the public to vote yes on Measures A and B. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Nancy, a longtime resident since 1966. It's almost impressive how fast the new councilman, I guess I can't mention him, Mr. Gruel, went from promising unity to publicly showcasing contempt for the very people he's supposed to represent. Real leadership isn't about dividing residents into categories you find convenient to mock. It's about standing up even when the room doesn't applaud. It's about understanding the public frustration in something you listen to, not belittle. Calling protesters circus animals and minions reveals the lack of emotional discipline and betrays a fundamental misunderstanding of what it means to serve a community. You don't have to agree with every voice, but you have to respect that we have the right to be heard without being dehumanized by the people paid to listen. And the late-night show on Fox Comedy is what transferred me to speak tonight. There's a difference between courage and cruelty once again. He means [BLEEP].
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes on A and B. Huntington Beach homeowner and voter since 1985. The words "local control" are often used by this city council to stop state government interference in city activities. Guess what? Measure A gives each parent and guardian local control over what books and materials their own children will get to see and read at the public library. Measure B gives Huntington Beach residents local control over how the public libraries will be managed. So if the HB city council demands local control over its city government, shouldn't the Huntington Beach residents have that same opportunity to have local control over how they use our public libraries? Is it just for city government? It's not for the rest of us? So vote yes on Measures A and B, because you want the local control, and we should have the freedom to choose.
Next speaker.
Bethany Webb, Huntington Beach resident, homeowner, anti-fascist. So I wanted to mention that the entire city council is now full of liars. So we knew that our original three lied when they did their Measure U and said it was to support our libraries, because they know that the people of Huntington support our libraries, lie, and had nothing to do with the libraries. Then our new three come in with signs that say "library supporter," lie. I think that's one of your 10 commandments, isn't it, Chad? Don't lie, but you're all lying. Then our newest seat, bought and paid for, says he wants to bring Huntington Beach together, and then does an interview where he calls the, what, 40% of us? I mean, animal names. Thank you. Welcome to the fascist lane. I'd also like to point out that what they're directing us from is the $23 million they wasted and the money that they're giving out for Wango Tango. Keep your eye on the [BLEEP].
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
They have stolen our children's minds. The Democrats, the leftists, the media, the libraries, the school systems have all stolen our children's minds. The Marxists, the Marxist librarians steal our children's minds and they're all working together in correlations to steal this country because they know if they steal our children's minds, they steal our country. And that's what they want. They want our children because they want our country. So we're here to take it back. So vote no on A and B to protect our children from porn. Vote no on A and B to protect our children from Marxist librarians in collusion with the media and everyone else to steal our children's minds and our country. Vote no on A and B to protect our children from groomers and pedophiles. Vote no on A and B to save this country. Vote no on A and B to take back this country and take back everything the left has stolen. Scott Walker, over and out.
Next speaker, please.
Valentina Bankhead. A woman who spoke at previous councils stated that she was voting no on A and B. A victim of explicit pornographic material from her childhood books and a victim of sexual assault, sexual abuse, sexual misconduct at the hands of others. She does not want children to have easy access to these explicit books as she had. Sitting behind me were two librarians. One of them chuckled, bragged that she works in the HB library, has a master's degree, is more intelligent than the speaker. She said that the speaker was sexually abused, raped, assaulted, being such a victim, she should just kill herself then. Let that sink in. That is a huge disconnect from our value and culture here in Huntington. Strongly vote no and no on changing the measures A and B, June 10th. Keep the transparency of a 21 parent community oversight committee versus one library director. Keep the council in charge of our city's library budget and control. Protect the kids, empower the parents, and support our conservative council with the resolutions they have made. Vote no on measure A and B.
Next speaker, please.
It's very difficult for me to stand up here right now and to discuss this because I've been dealing with this issue for over 17 years. My daughter was kidnapped at a public library. She was assaulted and took to a hotel, held hostage for three days. This is the first time I'm coming out and saying this, but she was a student at Calvary Chapel High School when this happened. Her innocence was robbed all because of pornography, an explicit act that men had preyed upon her. It is a serious matter and for you to sit here and laugh and mock Christian beliefs or morals or values of lives, innocent children, minors, this is a serious matter and you have no idea the trauma that I still experience and my daughter still experiences today because of pornography. It needs to come to an end. This is assault on the United States nations and it's assault on Huntington Beach, on the children's lives. They are the future.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Bobby? She's done. Ma'am, thank you, I'm sorry, time is out.
On April 23rd, many members of the Huntington Beach community, including many of the sitting and former members of the city council, gathered at the Shipley Nature Center as the center honored the memory of Shirley Detloff at the dedication of the Shirley Detloff interpretive center. As a former mayor, Shirley understood that it was the result nature of politics to have respectful differences of opinion. But she also understood that the best interest of the city often is achieved by acting in good faith in compromise. In memory of Shirley Detloff and all of the prior city councils who worked together to build a safe and respectful Huntington Beach, I request that future actions of the city council reflect the values of Shirley Detloff by focusing on matters which have involved the public safety and well-being of its residents.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Over the years, I've used the library for research while in school and during job searches. I love the trainings to use the apps like Libby and Hoopla to access books, movies, series, and audio materials. These free apps are great to use all the time, but especially when traveling, so quite a savings for residents or library users. I plan to vote yes on measure A and B to maintain a professional library staff free of bias and up to date on best practices to run a public library. Measure A preserves the parent's right to choose the best books for their child and B will allow voters to decide whether or not to privatize services. Vote yes on A and B because our libraries matter.
I believe the rest of it, how many are left?
Twenty, forty.
Oh.
Forty or more.
All right, next 20.
All right, next 20 speakers. Please feel free to say your name when you arrive at the podium, exit out the back of the library, make a left, and line up in the hallway. Tim Geddis, Chris Cluey, Megan Turell, Leanne Steneker, Chris Reenie, Brenda Glimm, Cindy Tincon, Jane Cook, Charlie Jackson, Stacy Grovesner, Emily S., B. Channel, Travis Coburn, Jennifer Thomas, Lori Lecter, Pam Norden, Jennifer Minco, Sean Rosliya, Jack Tanner, Vanette Coburn.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Chris Cluey, Huntington Beach resident for over 15 years. I just have a question for the council. What is wrong with you? I mean, you have people that are rightfully upset because you're hanging signs that have porn and giant red letters outside of elementary schools. You know who wants kindergarteners talking about porn? Pedophiles and molesters. You know who wants 5th graders looking up porn? Pedophiles and groomers. So I have to come to the conclusion that either that's what you want or you're completely ignorant of human behavior, okay? Now let's get to the actual porn in the library. If porn was in the library, it's a crime. People would be arrested. And I know from personal experience, you do not hesitate to put a charge if you think you have even the slightest excuse. So I am asking the people of Huntington Beach to please come together, get rid of these creepy little perverts, and vote yes on measures A and B so we can have a Huntington Beach agenda and not a MAGA megachurch agenda.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tim Geddis in the House, or should I say Big Top, since they are apparently allowing circus animals, primarily elephants, in the chambers along with MAGA minions, Christian nationalist cult members, and other deplorables desiring to spout their extremist claptrap to an adoring dais. Shame on all you city council members for allowing the demonization of our library-supporting community over the measures on the June election ballot. This culture war nonsense has gone too far. To characterize supporters of measures A and B as pornographers and pedophiles, mommy, what's a pedophile? Is our library and our library staff as satanic purveyors of smut should be, would be ludicrous and ill laughable if it wasn't polluting our social media sites like the Huntington Beach Community Sewer. Should you be flush with pride or just flushed?
Next speaker, please.
Leanne Steinkirschner, 35-year member of Huntington Beach community, raised my children here and now have two beautiful grandchildren here. And I'd like to ask city council to all please look at me when I speak. I have the unique and privileged position of working in maternal child health where I see so many of the parents, many, hundreds actually, thousands of them who are here in Huntington Beach, and I can't understand why you have so little faith in these parents. I work with parents of every faith, of no faith, of every color, of every sexual orientation. The thing that they all have in common is they love their children, they want to protect them, and they want to do what's best for them. I was able to raise my children here without any interference from the city council. My daughter, my sons, if they go on to have children here, should be given that same right to raise their children without any interference from you. You need to understand, just because people are against you having...
Next speaker, please. You're done, ma'am. You're done. You're done. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Megan. I was born and raised in Huntington Beach. I went to school for 13 years with your daughter, Mayor Burns, and now I have two young children here in Huntington Beach. We regularly attend Storytime. The upcoming election is not about actual porn in the library. Let's be realistic. There's 5,000 books plus in the children's library, less than 1% of them by your standards, not our standards, are not appropriate for children. This is a very minuscule threat to kids in practice. All of the public comments that I've seen, many of them include references to books about the LGBTQ community and a severe focus on this. Let's be true, this isn't about protecting kids. This is about you deeming the LGBTQ community as inappropriate, sexually explicit, and dangerous. They're not. They are people's parents, family members, children, neighbors, employees, volunteers. They exist here in Huntington Beach whether you like it or not, and they will always exist here and deserve visibility and normalization. So let's right-size this potential risk, the possibility, the consequences of an unsupervised young child being able to pick up one of the books, read it, even understand some of these books, they're so young. Let's remember who brings [BLEEP].
Next speaker, please.
I'd like to remind people once again about the accreditation of our librarians. Librarians spend years in school specializing in learning the ins and outs of these facilities. In short, they know a hell of a lot about this. They know a lot more than any random Karen or Shelley who have been brainwashed by the MAGA movement, and they know infinitely more than our city council, who have proven time and time again that they will never pick the residents over their political agenda. The common folks ignorance is the Nazis' power. Vote yes on A and B.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Huntington Beach, excuse me, Chris Reenie, Huntington Beach native. I wish people would stop reading adult romance novel books and pretending they're in children's. Some came from Karen England's personal library. We saw the livestream of Calvary Chapel telling the congregation to pick her books to read tonight. There is more porn on political signs than there is in the children's library. The seven restricted library books are puberty books and they're in the adult section. The same goes for Ellen Hopkins' Identical. Now in that book, you're reading a horror scene as salacious. When a judge rapes his daughter, it's horrifying. It's not supposed to be alluring. If you find that sexually arousing, that's on you. No one here thinks rape is funny. We object to rape being sensationalized for personal agenda. Council, stop misinforming people. Librarians are not pedophiles and groomers, whereas putting the word porn all over the city, teaching kids a new word, and taking away parental authority on when to tell children about sexuality, groomer much? Stop taking the gospel of St. Matthew out of context and respect the Third Amendment. And council members, if you lie to win, you lost the [BLEEP].
Hello, city council. My name is Brandy and I just want to read from a book. Looks really sweet and innocent, just a little puppy dog on the cover. "They fell onto the bed and mounted her, and she said, 'The field is fertile, beware.' And he said, 'I embrace the fertility.' And he plowed the field until it grasped the sheets and its fists, arched its back and cried out with joy." I just think pornography breeds perversion and I think it needs to stop in the library for the children. So I definitely support no on A. I would really like to preserve children's innocence. I think that children are the most precious thing this earth has and it's a shame that people think it's cute or somehow compassionate to have them read this garbage. It's just not okay. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, friends. My name is Sean. I'm a longtime resident and a former city council candidate way back in 2010. I'm here today to say yes on A and B. Thank you all. So I've been knocking on doors for the A and B campaign the last few weeks. It's been great to have the opportunity to talk to our neighbors about the importance of our democratic process and our beautiful library. The sheer amount of support and dedication the community has shown to our library is truly humbling and heartwarming. I want to remind everyone here that the city council went against the recommendation of staff and picked the most expensive option with this special election. We are needlessly wasting over a million dollars on this and I encourage everyone to keep that in mind while we hear the ongoing budget rundowns from all the departments. If anyone here wants to fight the good fight and come canvass for the library, find me or any of the yes on A and B folks. Thank you all so much.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Travis. I'm an HB resident, a civil servant, and most importantly, a parent. My children love this library and the many qualified people who make it a safe and welcoming place of knowledge and adventure. Not only do my kids get to discover fun characters and stories, they also discover different cultures and new perspectives. No one comes to the library looking for alternative facts or propaganda. That's what Twitter is for. A yes vote for A and B is a vote to protect our public libraries from political coercion and to prevent giving our tax dollars away to for-profit corporations. A yes vote is to prevent censorship. A yes vote is a vote for freedom. I urge my fellow citizens to vote yes on A and B. And to the city council, don't tread on me, don't tread on my children. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Stacy Grovesner, I'm a 25-year resident. First off, there is no porn in the library, hasn't been any porn. There have been plenty of porn signs though plastered all over our city though, thanks to a certain member of our city council. You guys have said that the books in our library are normalizing activities. What activities? I mean, are we talking about sex or sex education? Because sex is actually a normal human activity. It's how we all got here. And if you're talking about gay sex, well, gay sex is normal too for people who are gay. You also said these books are breaking down the family unit. And you refer to this indoctrination, indoctrination, you know, quite often here. What indoctrination is going on? Are you thinking that a straight kid who reads a gay story is going to turn gay? Because it doesn't work that way. What it might do though is maybe build some empathy and encourage inclusivity. Or maybe it helps a super confused kid to understand what they're feeling. And this 21-member book selection committee, handpicked by our own city council, that's all about control. What we need are educated and trained librarians making the decisions about the books for our library, not you guys or your handpicked lackeys.
Cindy Tincon, or as Dawn says, that rhymes with Wendy Rincon. Dawn likes to call out residents on social media as cowards hiding behind fake social media posts. Well, Dawn, here I am, Wendy Rincon. Chad, porn gate. You could have just said, you know what, guys? I got it wrong. I didn't think it all the way through. My bad. Let me remove those signs. Let me put up different signs and then we can move past it because I didn't intend to create a problem for kids going to school seeing the word porn. But a good leader would have done that, right? But instead, you doubled down. You said, "I'm gonna put up more." And I guess you did.
If you can, ma'am, please address the council.
I have a First Amendment right. Thank you so much.
We have a right to, to run a peaceful meeting.
I have, can I reclaim my time?
No. Please continue.
So now we see how it is. Now we see how it is.
Next speaker, please.
My daughter's friend and her young daughter were having a casual chat in the car excitedly discussing... discussing the day ahead. Suddenly, her daughter innocently asked, "Mommy, what's porn?" Her heart skipped a beat as her eyes followed her daughter's gaze to the shocking signs plastered all around the school. She confided in us that she had anticipated the inevitable conversation about intimacy and relationships, but she never imagined it would come knocking at the tender age of six. I'm heartbroken that she had to lose some of her innocence so soon. Our older grandkids had sought out the meaning of porn as soon as they returned home from school. This prompted us to embark upon a sensitive discussion about the stark disparities between porn and healthy intimate relationships. These crucial conversations are vital, but the timing and manner in which they unfold should be carefully orchestrated by parents and caregivers, not dictated by external forces. The Navy SEAL, your unsettling fixation on porn is not only disconcerting but also deeply distressing. You took it upon yourself...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Jenny Minko. Live and grew up in Huntington Beach. I was a youth leader for 12 years at a local church, and I'm curious to know how many people in this room actually have a library card and actually read the Bible, because the Bible's pretty spicy. According to your definitions, it might also not be considered appropriate for the young adult section. But I'm going to talk about my personal experience as a math teacher and being one of the professionals chosen to choose the math curriculum for my school district. Because of my knowledge and expertise in our district's student population and in my expertise in mathematics education, I was allowed to choose a curriculum that was appropriate for our schools. But teachers had the choice to use that curriculum or to choose something that was better for their class. In the same way, librarians have to have a master's in library science or a master's of library and information science to work in their profession. Let them choose the books in our library. Let them classify where they go, and let the teachers, or, excuse me, let the parents choose which ones are best for their family. Don't be hypocritical, and trust the professionals to do their job. Trust the librarians.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, council. I just want to say how much I appreciate you and I support you. I do have a suggestion for our city. Some cities, like Irvine, the sizes of the signs for political or things like this are like a three-by-four. Our signs, most of our signs are like gigantic, and they're in your face, and for people who maybe don't have time to look up the pros and cons of what they're voting for, they might just see, yes, you know, parents' support. That sounds, it sounds wonderful. No, protect our children, that sounds wonderful. But until they really investigate and find out what they're voting for, I think if the signs are smaller, they have to actually go, what is that about? And they'll go home and look it up on their computer, or even question you. So I think that would help our city. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. I have some questions for the city council for you to think about, but basically, there are 30 books on the restricted list as of February 23, 2024. And I wondered who selected these books? What were the credentials of the people that were given that opportunity to select the books? And what were the instructions given, well, in selection of those? And so I kind of liken this situation to my own family. I have three children, and we used to go to Mario's at Warner, at Springdale and Edinger. And afterwards, we went to Jungle Video, which was, you know, each one of the three kids got to go and check out a video. And they had a section, they had a special section that had a curtain and the movies that...
So sorry.
Hello, council. This special election is not simply about libraries and their content. It is about the community, our quality of life, our kids, and honoring the constitutional rights established by this country's founding fathers, including the separation of church and state. It has become a referendum on how we want our city government to be run and all of its residents respected. Whether you are left or right, conservative or liberal, regardless of your choice of religion and place of worship, it's past time to put an end to the kind of corrosive, destructive speech and behavior that is tearing this city apart through fear. Please vote yes on measures A and B. No book review committee, no outsiders running our libraries. Thank you.
Vote yes on measure B to allow voters to decide if a for-profit company should manage the library. The Huntington Beach Library is a world-class library. That's why some people move here. Just ask Fullerton and Escondido how bad privatization is for their city library. Privatization won't improve services. In 1992, the residents did not trust the city council to do the right thing for our parks, so a measure was passed to require a vote to change the parks. No one ever thought that library management would be outsourced, meaning privatized. So here we are again today to keep the city council honest and require voters to approve privatization. Fiduciary responsibility, privatization won't save very much money. Without measure B, the city council could outsource the library for an insignificant amount of money. That's irresponsible. LSNS will cut services, make profits, and claim Doge efficiency.
I'm going to read a little story. Once upon a time, there was a beautiful library in a beautiful town, full of caring and happy people. Then an angry witch named Griselda, with long black hair, and a snake in her tongue, slithered into the beautiful library and tried to cast a spell on the townspeople with fake stories about the nice people that worked there. The witch used her poisonous tongue to force the wolves and hyenas to lure the church people to the library swamp, where she showed them the one page of pictures out of 200,000 books. So then she poisoned the church people, called the nice librarians horrible names. The wolves and hyenas used the witch's poison on the people in the land to make them think the library was evil and bad. One big Chad Wolf tried to lure the children of the town to the dungeon with bad signs at their schools, but the parents grabbed their children back just in time and told that wolf to go back to the...
Hello, council and citizens. I'm Jennifer Thomas, longtime resident in Huntington Beach, parent and grandparent. I have to say, city council, to all of you, I am so, so disappointed. The, those porn signs went back up again on Monday, this last Monday, a couple days ago. They're smaller, but they're everywhere. We can't have that. That's wrong. And then why in the world would you waste our tax dollars when we have so much infrastructure that needs to be worked on for this million, I think we're up to a million three is what I heard, for this special election? It doesn't make any sense. So please, everyone, vote yes and yes.
No. Bobby.
Vote yes on A and B.
I don't know.
Hi, my name is Christian Hughes. I'm 32 years old, and I'm studying political science at Cal State Long Beach. I've been in Huntington for about three months now, and I just have a few thoughts to share. Okay, so some authors actually get excited by writing erotic crap for children. Is this the kind of literature we want unfettered access to? We have to be realistic and understand that not every author has good intentions. Some book publishers have bad intentions. Pedophiles work in every industry. We have to protect kids. So there's basically a spiritual war going on, not only in the government, but also in society. We've got demonic influences trying to tear apart the nuclear family through subtle suggestions like saying that porn is okay, which prevents boys from becoming men, it makes society weaker. It's a plague, and we should honestly just ban it. Look at the fall of Rome and how the birth rate plummeted. It might look kind of familiar. My last point is this. If the review board gets approved, I think we can make it better by allowing 11 members to be voted in by ballot, and 10 members...
All right, sir. Next group.
Next group of speakers, please exit the back of the library, make a left, line up in the hallway. Sue Kingman, Diana Lithgow, Matt, Mary Ann Chelder, Denise, Donald Eugene, Robert Thepst, Sam Geezy, Brian Thienis, Brian Shower, Harry Clithrow, Lisa, Tom Ursano, Dave Reinerson Iverson, Natalie Morose, Morzu, Natalie Moser, Jake Comer, Shannon Eggleson, Marlene Bronson.
Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Diana Lithgow, family nurse practitioner, 43 years Huntington Beach resident, raised children and grandchildren here. Protect Huntington Beach is a completely volunteer, citizen-driven effort to stop you all from taking control of our library, content, and financial. We want a free and educational library, safe for our kids, and free from your propaganda. On Monday, in this country, an ultra-conservative Texas school board was completely voted out amid book ban and book restrictions. 100%. Your time is next.
My name's Sue Kingman. I want to talk about the signs plastered all around town, endorsed by a council member that say no on A and B, protect our kids from porn. It's not just that this is in poor taste or that it's wildly inaccurate, but it actually promoted the thing it was supposed to avoid. How many very young, newly reading kids went home and asked their parents, what's porn? Or Googled it themselves? Do you know where I've never seen the word porn? In the library. So these are the book, these are books about bodies and puberty. They're not what anyone would define as porn. It was this council member's choice to place these signs, many right by elementary schools, all around town. Do you want someone with this lack of judgment telling you or electing a committee to tell you what your kids are able to read? Because I certainly don't. So I'm asking the council to just leave the library alone, don't plaster it with a mega plaque, don't sell it to the highest bidder, and don't attempt to undermine the expertise of librarians. And leave friends of the library alone, too. If you're really worried about campaign violations of IRS law, maybe you shouldn't be peddling your political views as a pastor and telling people how to vote during church.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, Patricia Pappas, 45-year-plus resident. And when this came to the council a few years ago, in the resolution, I thought, oh no, these books can't be here. So four of us went, and we found these books, and it's been two and a half years of finding more and more books. A vote no on A and B, protect the children, and protect the integrity of the council and our charter and their fiscal responsibilities. When you look at, let's talk about this book, it says, I printed the screenshot of this book from our library, and what it says, for, this is the 13 on up, so it's NYA, it says, Sexual Instruction for Children. That's what it says. And it is sexual, and it is, I say we have sexual, we have obscene, we have sexual explicit, and we do have some pornography. I don't know what to say. And if you look at this book, Identical, and you read about Kaylee and the, oh gosh, what her father does to her, why would you want to leave this on the shelf for children and for teens?
Time, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sam Geezy. I started a business in Huntington Beach right after I graduated from Marina High School. I made tortilla strips, and we sold them throughout the Huntington Beach High School District. Some people in the district discovered that on the bottom of the tortilla strip label, it said, "A Christian Company Dedicated to a New Life Through Jesus Christ." And they thought that might be harmful to some of the students that were in high school. So they went to the Huntington Beach High School District Board and brought their objections up, and after some back and forth, they finally decided, yes, that shouldn't be on there, and they required that I take it off, and I complied, and I did it. So isn't it interesting that 50 years later, I find that we have an effort to turn libraries into adult bookstores for children? So I very much applaud the strong stand that our council is taking. Those who will not stand for something will surely fall for anything. Keep up the good work.
Good evening. I'm Lisa from Huntington Beach. I'm a 50-year resident. I'm here this evening to express my total disgust with the vandalism of the vote no on A and B banners. Disgusted but not surprised when I listen to comments made by some of the speakers in favor of measures A and B. Are these the same people that shout democracy and then try to dismantle it by tearing down or defacing the opposite viewpoint? I can't be the only one that sees a hypocrisy in this. Not one person has explained how the current library policies are doing harm to children utilizing our libraries. When I've seen any news coverage of this issue, the images from the books in question are always blurred. That is the clearest indicator that the books are not appropriate for viewing by the general population, much less young children. I hope that some of the speakers on the opposite side of this issue would have the courage to stand up and speak out against the vandalism and anti-democratic behavior, and if not, shame on you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. I'm against measure A and B, therefore, I'm voting no. The same people that are tearing down and destroying the A and B signs want to keep pushing these inappropriate sexually graphic books and their radical leftist agenda on our children. The same people that call us Nazis, yells, scream, and cuss up here at the city council members are the same people that want to control our children and our libraries, but I'd suggest they learn how to control themselves first. They had to lie to our community about a book ban and about what types of books we are targeting in order to get enough signatures to move this to a, to a measure. These are not the type of people that should be making any decisions for HB, let alone for our libraries, and especially not for our children. Vote no on A and B. Vote no to protect our children. Vote no against pedophiles and groomers. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, well, a lot of talk about porn lately, and it's a little concerning. We can't even seem to agree on what porn actually is, and it seems like it's making people uncomfortable, but one thing we can take comfort in is that our city leaders know porn. No one has ever known porn better than the council people before us. Truly, how many cities can be blessed enough to be graced by seven experts of porn? And if anyone dared doubts the porno kings and queen of HB, then I would like to refute that. Would our council be rage posting on social media about porn peddlers if they didn't know porn? Would our council be handing out pamphlets at children's Easter egg cons if they didn't know porn? Would our council be... Would our council be boasting to reporters about their personal stash of porn if they didn't know porn? Would our council be friends with Matt Gaetz if they didn't know porn? And would our council be littering our streets with signs warning of porn if they didn't 100% hand to God, no porn?
Next speaker, please.
Taking over our libraries isn't just a local problem. This crusade comes from the blueprint of the current regime. Project 2025 needed a villain to go after the libraries. Pages one and five calls out librarians as purveyors of porn and threatens to prosecute them. Librarians and those of us who support their good work are being vilified in your holy war. You have sown chaos in our community in the worst possible way. Your campaign has intentionally created chaos. Our goal is to keep the libraries public with content monitored by our trained and skilled librarians. Several of my own closest friends have served in public libraries, and they're among the finest of us. How dare you discredit them and the supporters of the libraries? You've gone too far. As someone once said to a man who's now sitting on the dais, you're making it weird. You're the one making it weird. Yes, on A and B.
Good evening, council members. Brian Thienis here, longtime resident of Huntington Beach.
Excuse me. Please keep it down. Well, if you're not saying anything, you don't need to be told, but now you're disrupting the meeting. So please do not argue. Just everybody be quiet and let the speaker be heard. Go ahead, sir.
So, thank you. I think city council got it right. A couple of parents were concerned that their children had access to books that were inappropriate for their age, but, you know, I'm not taking anybody's word for it. I'm not just hearing what I hear on the streets. I looked at the ordinance. The ordinance says we're just moving the books to another section of the library. I went to, I had my staff go to about a dozen other libraries. This book here, it's perfectly normal. It is for age 10 and up, and it suggests, the author of this book suggests that a 10-year-old make a decision on a sexual lifestyle for the rest of their life when they're 10 years old. That's what this book says. And porn, there's your naked heterosexual couple, there's your naked female, female, and then there's your naked male, male couple.
Dave Reinersen. Huntington Beach is more divided now than at any other time in my 27 years. Just look at all the vandalism of political signs. It is directly attributable to a city council more concerned with remaking Huntington Beach in their image than in running a city for the benefit of its citizens. A key flashpoint is their desire to control our award-winning library. Vote yes on measure A to keep political and religious censorship out of our library's holdings, and vote yes on measure B to let the citizens have the final say on whether or not our library operations are outsourced.
Hello. I'm a 25-year resident of Huntington Beach, and I had an experience last week. I had a seminar in Cancun, Mexico with 800 other people, all from the United States and around the world. I was talking during a seminar, and they said, well, where are you from? And of course, being in a facility like that, you say Los Angeles. Whereabouts? And then you say Orange County. Whereabouts? Huntington Beach. And half the audience laughed. You know, it was an embarrassment to me, and it's embarrassment across the country that we're thought of that way. And if you, as the city council, are not ashamed of the way the response is to when someone says Huntington Beach, then you should not be representing our city. That's all.
Next speaker, please.
Everybody, my name is Shannon, and I'm really interested in a lot of things, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much for being here and standing up and taking your time out of your life to do something good. And thank you to everybody here that is so impassioned in what they do and say. My question to everybody is, does it really get outsourced? Is it really everything that's been said tonight? We have some time before the vote goes. I just think everyone, with all the passion that's in this room tonight, should look up what is really true and change it.
Cutting off speakers for naming council members is unconstitutional. The First Amendment protects our right to criticize elected officials by name during public comment. Mayor, censorship doesn't just happen in our library, it's happening right here at this microphone. Look at what you've done to our community, to our library. Eight librarians have left since 2023. You've attacked volunteers, you've manufactured crisis to deflect from your failures, misrepresenting books and misleading the public. Our library has become a platform for censorship and politics. A policy of control is being driven through fear by loud voices on a church stage, not by professionals or residents. It doesn't have to be this way. Focus on what really matters: public safety, infrastructure, quality of life. Vote yes on A and B, have faith in parents, visit ourlibambattles.org, and watch out for false prophets. They come to you in sheep's clothing, but inwardly, they are ferocious wolves.
City clerk, do we have any more speakers? Okay, go recess for five minutes. Council members, do you have any appointment announcements? Okay, none. We'll move on to AB 1234 reporting. Butch?
Yes, I attended the Southern California Association of Governments' annual meeting last week down in Palm Desert for three days.
All right. Anybody else?
I attended, I went out to Washington, DC to advocate for some funding.
As I. Okay, openness and negotiation disclosures? Anybody? No? Okay, move on. City managers report.
Thank you, mayor and city council. Tonight, we have the Department Services Budget Overviews, and we will start with our City Treasurer Department with Alisa Backstrom, our city treasurer.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with some information on the city treasurer's annual budget. Per Section 311 of the city charter, the city treasurer's powers and duties are receipt, collection, dispersment, and safekeeping of all city funds. As well, the city treasurer is responsible for investment management of all monies excluding the CalPERS pension. The city treasurer's office annual budget is approximately 1.9 million. The largest portion is personnel costs at approximately 69%, and operating expenses are approximately 24%, as you can see here. As our department is responsible for all payment, receipt, and collection services, these service providers make up the majority of the operating expenses. So this would include things such as the data ticket contract, which currently serves to process and collect payments for parking and related revenues. As a percent of the city's general fund expenses, the city treasurer's office budget is about The department is currently comprised of 9.5 FTEs, of which nine are filled. This includes the city treasurer, a deputy city treasurer, a treasury manager, a senior administrative assistant, a senior accountant, an account tech supervisor, a senior account tech supervisor, and 2.5 account techs, of which 0.5 has not been filled. The city treasurer's office provides a variety of support services for the city as a whole. So you can see here, treasury and banking services include managing all banking services for the city, receive, deposit, and collect all taxes, assessments, fees, and other revenue, disperse all citywide approved funds, and process checks and electronic payments, staff the cashiering front counter at city hall five days a week, 8 to 5 p.m., manage receipts and reporting of citywide TOT and T bid for the hotels and short-term rentals, manage citywide payment service providers, maintain cash and surety bonds for construction and other bonded projects. We also have investment management services, which consists of managing the city's approximately $400 million portfolio, creating cash projections, and maintaining required operational liquidity, producing monthly investment reports for city council and the public, which are on the city's website, meet, meeting with the investment advisory board on a quarterly basis, and additional investment oversight, including the 115 trust, bond reserves, and a few other accounts. The city treasurer also is the treasurer for West Orange County Water Board and CNOA, and serves as a board member for the city's deferred compensation plan, as well as the city's supplemental retirement plan. Some operations and performance data I have here for you, just to give you some ideas. We process over $11 million in revenue annually from permits and fees. We process over $21 million in revenue annually for off-site locations, including parking meter revenue and recreation fees. Process and collect miscellaneous revenues of over $19 million from over 57,000 invoices. Collect and process payments of over $17 million for the transient occupancy tax for the hotels and over about $1 million for the STRs or short-term rentals. Process over 350,000 transactions at the city hall counter, cashiering stations on an annual basis, release over 55,000 accounts payable, payroll, and electronic payments annually. We manage and negotiate banking contracts and services, manage the $400 million investment portfolio, meeting the objectives of safety, liquidity, and market return through economic and budgetary cycles with no compliance issues, generate over $10 million in earnings from the portfolio during the fiscal year for operational needs. We processed over 400 electronic payment applications in the past six months to help increase efficiencies, and we've received the California Municipal Treasurers Association's investment policy certification. So with that, I invite you to ask any questions about the department budget.
Geez?
Thanks, Alisa. We've had some good meetings recently. I know it's not necessarily your department for efficiencies, but you have access to all of, obviously, the financial systems in the city. Can you kind of bring up some ideas that you've mentioned to me where you thought we could create efficiencies in the city and potentially increase some revenues?
Yes, as I mentioned, our department is a support department, so outside of the personnel and the contract expenses, we have very little expense. However, we have and pay, so that should help us with collecting current revenues and hopefully looking to collect some additional revenues there. We've also been working on increasing electronic payments rather than using checks. This is for efficiency and decrease fraud, as checks have, are proven to be the largest source of fraud as far as payments go. We've moved various employee payments to electronic. We've moved vendors and have, have some of them moving to pay electronically. We've incorporated it into the documents for new vendors that they will pay electronically. One area that we'd still like to move to electronic is employee reimbursement. So we'd like to work with the City Managers' Office, with the IS Department, and with Finance to hopefully get that implemented. On our Accounts Receivables process, we have been identifying outstanding items and working with the various departments to get them paid. We also worked with a consultant to identify and solve the issue of late payments not being applied to the JDE, or that's our financial system, payments. We've implemented a process to send final notices for outstanding items, and we are sending unpaid items to collections where applicable. We are currently working also with our consultant and with internal staff in different departments on the financial system, JDE, so it will appropriately bill specific categories of customers and coordinate with those departments so we can set up a more standardized process for billing and collecting. Currently, there's not really a specific Accounts Receivable person in our area. I would recommend that we have somebody in that area to be more dedicated to Accounts Receivable. This would vastly also improve, all of these things would vastly improve the amount collected. One other thing we've been working on recently is working with the IS Department to review the systems that receive and process payments that our department currently uses to ensure these systems are being utilized to their best capacity and integrating as much as possible with other systems. We'd like to make sure that anytime a city department is considering a new system or software that has a billing component, they make sure to include the Treasury area and the IS Department from the beginning to ensure that the system can work with our existing systems and processes and that it is the best option. So we had a great conversation with the IS Department today, and we're looking at our cashiering system, Inova, to get it upgraded to its most current level and, and see how it can better integrate with the systems that we use to make that process smoother and to make it better for making sure that we collect our accounts receivable. So those are some of the areas that we're working on right now, and we hope that those can help us with efficiencies and better collection of city monies.
Thank you. That's perfect. And I think the word you used about 30 times, which is perfect, "collections," right, which translates to more revenue. So that's money that we're not currently collecting, but we should be. So really appreciate it. That's a lot of great work, and that's a great list. So thank you so much.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Don?
You've just given us so much great information, Alisa. When we sat down on our one-on-one, I, I think I left there with a very confident understanding that you've identified a lot of the shortcomings, you've identified some process solutions, some software solutions and recommendations, and as Casey just said, you've increased these collections. And a lot of it was based on some antiquated software, systems that don't talk to one another. And you've really, I left there with a feeling that you've got your hands full, but you've identified the areas of importance to prioritize. And I just want to commend you. You've just given us a lot of information, and it really is a summary of increasing the efficiency of that department. And for that, as a resident and a council member, I'm thankful. Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mayor. City Council. We do have our City Clerk's Department, and Lisa Lane Barnes will provide her budget overview.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for having me here this evening. This evening, I'll be presenting a report that provides an overview on the vital functions and statutory obligations of the Office of the City Clerk. Our department is the central hub of city governance, an operational powerhouse that drives, connects, and integrates every facet of city administration. We are indispensable, and we are networked. As eminent political scientist Professor William Bennett Moreau said, "No other office in municipal service has so many contacts. It serves the mayor, the city council, city manager, and all administrative departments without exception. All of them call upon the Office of the City Clerk daily for some service information. The public does not realize how many loose ends of administration this office pulls together." We're a powerhouse. So the Office of the City Clerk has a $1,438,904 annual budget, 26% of our budget, $372,096 are operating expenses. The majority of those expenses are from election costs, equipment and supplies, professional services for codifier, and our net file services. 8% of our budget, $91,366, goes to CalPERS, and 68% of our budget, $975,442, goes to professional services, which is salaries, permanent, overtime, and benefits. And the revenue from the Passport Department is projected for this fiscal year finish to be $185,000. Okay, openness and negotiation disclosures?
Anybody? No? Okay, move on. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We do have our City Clerk's Department, and Lisa Lane Barnes will provide her budget overview.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for having me here this evening. This evening, I'll be presenting a report that provides an overview on the vital functions and statutory obligations of the Office of the City Clerk. Our department is the central hub of city governance, an operational powerhouse that drives, connects, and integrates every facet of city administration. We are indispensable, and we are networked. As eminent political scientist Professor William Bennett Moreau said, "No other office in municipal service has so many contacts. It serves the mayor, the city council, city manager, and all administrative departments without exception. All of them call upon the Office of the City Clerk daily for some service information. The public does not realize how many loose ends of administration this office pulls together." We're a powerhouse. So the Office of the City Clerk has a $1438,904 annual budget, 26% of our budget, $372,096 are operating expenses. The majority of those expenses are from election costs, equipment and supplies, professional services for codifier, and our net file services. 8% of our budget, $91,366, goes to CalPERS, and 68% of our budget, $975,442, goes to professional services, which is salaries, permanent, overtime, and benefits. And the revenue from the Passport Department is projected for this fiscal year finish to be $185,000. We are a team of 10. We have six full-time and four part-time employees. The full-time employees are in the Legislative Operational Division and Elections. We have an Assistant City Clerk, a senior, and two senior deputy clerks. We have four part-time passport agents, and we have two people in our Records Management Division. The Office of the City Clerk has several divisions, Legislative Operations, Elections, Records Management, and Passport Acceptance. The Office of the City Clerk is an internal and external service department. At the heart of our responsibility is the management of the City Council Agenda, a function that is far more than administrative. It is the cornerstone of our legislative process. Every decision that is made by the Council is predicted on the Agenda produced by our office, established a critical legal framework through which all city actions are rendered transparent to the public. So in Agenda Management, the Office of the City Clerk oversees the preparation and organization of the Council Agenda. We integrate submissions from all 12 city departments, ensuring full compliance with internal policies, statutory mandates, and procedural requirements for a clear presentation of legislative matters. We finalize every action approved by the City Council, including ordinances, resolutions, as well as facilitate the execution and completion of contracts, agreements, and professional services not presented to Council, all in compliance with legal and regulatory justifications, the California Open Meeting Law, including the Brown Act Government Code Sections 5490 through 54963. The Brown Act mandates that all meetings of public bodies be conducted openly with proper public notice and complete accurate documentation, such as meeting agendas minutes and supplemental communications. We also record official documents with the county, maintaining an unbroken chain of legal accountability for very important documents, and we oversee invoice approvals, budget documentation, purchase orders, and procurement to ensure financial accountability and streamlined operations. In our Election Division, we manage FPPC filings and Form 700 submissions for city officials, designated employees, boards, and commissions to ensure regulation compliance. I know you've all heard from my office. We maintain a digital candidate manual for City Clerk's website that provides clear election guidelines for candidates and ensure public transparency. We partner with Orange County Register of Voters to manage vote center licenses for all elections, all in compliance with legal and regulatory justifications, Election Code Section 15000 and 15900. The Election Code sets forth the procedures and requirements for managing elections, including the maintenance of election records, proper certification of voter information, and transparency in candidate filings. In our Records Management Division, we manage the implementation of a centralized records management program. We are developing a revised retention schedule, records retention schedule, to ensure records are received and created by the city, are maintained in compliance with government record-keeping regulations. We establish procedures to facilitate timely access to information in compliance with federal and state statutes, such as the California Public Records Act and the Freedom of Information Act. We ensure historical and vital records are identified, protected, and processed in accordance with established procedures, and all in compliance with legal and regulatory justifications of California Public Records Act. The California Public Records Act requires that every agency maintain complete, accurate, and readily accessible records. It maintains a timely and structured response to public requests. And also, our Passport Division, our office ensures that passport operations strictly adhere to both federal and state regulations set by the US Department of State. Each passport application requires stringent verification, including proof of citizenship, identity confirmation, secure handling of sensitive documents. As federal guidelines evolve, our passport agents undergo continuous training to remain informed and compliant, safeguarding our facility's authorization, and avoiding potential penalties. Additionally, we maintain accreditation by rigorously preparing and submitting the City Clerk's annual office certification application, confirming that our procedures and staff training standards meet all the federal and compliance requirements, in compliance with legal and regulatory justifications and the stringent requirements set by the US Department of State Title 22, Code of Federal Regulations, Part 51. And our operations and performance data. I can't read it from here. Give me one second. So we have processed over 265 contracts, agreements, and amendments ensuring compliance with policies, compulsory documentation, mandates, and insurance requirements. We have managed over 300 FPPC filers from 700 forms and campaign filings. We initiated the implementation of a records retention schedule to multiply physical record storage locations in the city that resulted in the destruction of more than 300 boxes of obsolete records and identification of inactive records requiring permanent retention. We facilitated 25 public notices successfully submitted for publication in local newspapers, effectively disseminating critical information to the community and stakeholders. Oversaw the adoption and codification of 76 resolutions and ordinances effectuating new laws and regulations and/or updates to both the City Municipal's Code and zoning code to reinforce the city's legal framework and ensure operational efficiency. We've recorded 47 documents with the OC Clerk Recorder, ensuring accurate compliant of archival and official records. And through our GOQA, Public Records Request Management System, we have had a total page views of 11,834,906. Average daily page views are 32,424. We have had 891 responsive public record requests and 15,140 unique visitor views. That is the Office of the City Clerk. We are a small team, but we are held to a very high standard through government codes, municipal regulations, and laws that must be held in high standard. And with that, I'll leave you. If you have any questions?
Any questions?
No questions. I just want to promote the Passport Division and service we have at the Clerk's Office. It's very convenient. It's easy to set an appointment, whether it's a new passport, renewing a passport, a new passport photo. It's a great revenue source for the city. So if you guys did not know that, please pass the word out that we have an amazing passport service at the City Clerk's Office.
I will say you can make your passport appointment online. It's 15 minutes. You're in and out. Our staff is well-trained. It takes no time at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Travis, you got any more?
Yes, we have our Community Development Department.
Oh, good. Oh, chance come.
Jennifer Beasenior, our Community Development Director, will provide the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Jennifer Beasenior. I'm the Director of Community Development, and want to thank you for this opportunity. We love to talk about community development whenever we get a chance. That is so far. So the Community Development Department consists of 63 full-time employees within two divisions. The Development Services Division is located on the third floor, and the Community Enhancement Division is located on the fifth floor of City Hall. At one point, we were actually three separate departments. We were the Planning Department, the Building Department, and the Economic Development Department, but have since merged, and now we are Community Development, all as one. The Development Services consists of the Permit Center, Planning and Inspection Services, and Community Enhancement consists of Economic Development, Housing, Code Enforcement, and Real Estate Services, which is our newest division. The adopted budget for the Community Development Department is $12.5 million, of which just over 10 million comes from the General Fund. The majority of our budget is related to personnel costs, with just over $1 million attributed to operating expenses. On the revenue side, the department earns about 13.5, sorry, million dollars for the city, with about 2/3 coming from permit-related activities, and the other third from real estate revenues and the management of Ocean View Estates Mobile Home Park. I'll briefly explain the services provided by the Community Development Department. Essentially, on, excuse me, the Development Services side, we implement the regulatory processes and rules of the city for the development of private property. The adopted budget for the Community Development Department is $12.5 million, of which just over $10 million comes from the General Fund. The majority of our budget is related to personnel costs, with just over $1 million attributed to operating expenses. On the revenue side, the department earns about $13.5—sorry—$1 million for the city, with about 2/3 coming from permit-related activities and the other 3rd from real estate revenues and the management of Ocean View Estates' mobile home park. I'll briefly explain the services provided by the Community Development Department. Essentially, on—the development services side—we implement the regulatory processes and rules of the city for the development of private property. We assist private property owners with navigating the process and help them follow the codes put in place to ensure the safety and quality of our community. Code Enforcement utilizes education to obtain voluntary compliance of the city's codes and works with property owners to resolve issues related to municipal code violations in addition to special code enforcement of CDBG areas. They also spend time doing more targeted enforcement—thank you—targeted enforcement of hot-button issues such as, like illegal dispensaries. The Housing Division manages the city's CDBG and home grant funding, which consists of programs such as the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program and Residential Rehab Loan Program. They also manage the Ocean View Estates' city-owned mobile home park, and also the city's Inclusionary Housing Program. Economic Development focuses on implementing the city's economic development strategy, which consists of helping businesses within the city to stay and grow. They also work to promote the city to investors and attract new businesses. They essentially act as the city's business advocate and maintain and develop partnerships with other organizations to promote and market the city. Real Estate Services is our newest division as part of the city's Council's direction to centralize real estate function and to manage the city's assets better. Real estate's focus right now is on lease management and tenant solicitation. I'll just note a couple of items from this slide. Obviously, we're very proud of our 96% outstanding rating from our community survey, but what I really want to know—excuse me—about the survey—sorry. What I really want to know about the survey is that the Permit Center works very hard to put some checks in place so that they can work in a mode of continual improvement. Everyone gets a customer survey at permit issuance as well as at final inspection. We review those surveys weekly and use them to see where are the pain points, what's working really well for our customers, and using that to make improvements in our operation. We also use them to give the feedback to the employees to let them know when someone has said that they've gotten a rave review. We also conducted over 50 business visits as part of the City Council's strategic plan goal to focus on economic development. This outreach is part of the Business Advocate Program, where economic development staff are there to assist them through the city's process and connect them with resources. Lastly, I'll point out that the Mobile Home TBRA Program continues to be very popular, and in the last fiscal year assisted 82 very low-income seniors. In terms of efficiencies and reductions, a couple of things to highlight is we've reorganized within the department to add positions where we needed them without adding additional FTEs. An example of that is we reorganized some administrative positions to staff up the Real Estate Division, and we actually collaborated with Public Works to utilize a half-position from their department. So we thought that was a really great example of the city team coming together to implement a direction from the City Council. We've made some process modifications to free up staff capacity rather than requesting additional staff, and that was in the Permit Center. We've made some operating budget adjustments to fund the operation of the Real Estate Divisions for things such as appraisals, Phase 1 reports, title reports, without requesting additional budget from the City Council. We did those budget adjustments within our department, pulling from other divisions such as Code Enforcement and Housing. We've moved the management—excuse me—and operation of the Ocean View Estates to the Housing Division, and that has really improved, one, the quality of life of the residents, but also in doing so, we've increased the revenue about $150,000 over the last five years. And then finally, we are currently undergoing a lease optimization assessment, which will help to identify ways in which the businesses can be more successful, and the city will have better partnerships with our tenants. On the reduction side, I'll just note that over the last two fiscal years, we've reduced our budget to the equivalent of 25% of our operating budget, and this next fiscal year, we're proposing about a 10% equivalency of our operating budget reduction, which includes the elimination of one full-time employee, as well as some reductions in our professional services budget. And then lastly, I just wanted to briefly touch on the Streamline Surf City Program. Now, the goal of the Streamline Surf City Program is really to elevate our service and the customer experience, but I've included it here because many of the initiatives of Streamline Surf City are all about creating efficiencies. For instance, when we launched the Permit Center, which was back in '21, we realized that we probably were understaffed with planners, so we took a look at our process and found that we could create one approval process for about 15 different building permits, which eliminated the need for planning review. So we both created an efficiency and streamlined the process, and we didn't need to ask for additional staff to do that. So some of the other initiatives in Streamline Surf City, they have that dual purpose, and we hope to continue to look for areas that we can do this more. We found that Streamline Surf City and our overall program of the Permit Center has been very successful, and we've had several cities ask to replicate what we're doing and take tours, and we even had one city say they put their RFP, "We want what Huntington Beach has." So that's why I included it here, because it does have that dual purpose I wanted to note. And with that, that concludes our presentation. We have myself, as well as our other staff here, to answer any questions.
Thanks, JV. Appreciate the efficiencies, appreciate the reductions, obviously 25%, and then 10% this year. Can you go back to the previous slide? Talk about it as often as I can. Nope, excellent, streamline. You're correct, streamline is unique in that it creates efficiencies but also increases revenue. This was one of our campaign pillars in 2022, the contract that we signed with the voters to cut the red tape to City Hall and revolve the red carpet. Streamline HB is an amazing program. We've increased the certificates of occupancy issued by 23% in one year. So that's 23% increase in businesses, permits being issued, jobs being created faster, sales tax revenue created more quickly or generated more quickly to the city. We're just in the first Phase 1, as you can see on this slide. Phase 2 and 3 are in process, but as JV mentioned, we are the example and the gold star of what cities are trying to achieve. I work in development across the country. I'll tell you, most cities do this horribly. It's really inefficient, it's really hard to get a permit. It's where the gold star now for other cities that are reaching out, and as Jennifer just touched on, cities are actually issuing requests or proposals to mirror what we've done in our Streamline Surf City Program. We're really proud about it, and we've only completed the first phase, so thanks, JV.
You're welcome.
More just a comment. Watching the political landscape change when the Fab 4 came into 2022 and started initiating a lot of these processes throughout all of the government. Coming from the private sector, I've seen over the last few years of being very active and watching our government now participating, a real shift from a governmental operation to an operation really striving to run more like a private-sector business, which in my opinion is very healthy, because you have to produce results, you have to be accountable, you have to run lean and mean, and I know there's room to continue to improve, but as all these departments have come before us, I think it's very important to point out that there's a saying that says, "It takes five miles to change the course of a supertanker." So it doesn't happen overnight. I see a lot of promising progress in the departments, and I just wanted to say for you, Jennifer, and your department—I spent a lot of time down there, you've been very helpful, your whole department's very knowledgeable, so great job, let's keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Thank you, Jen. Travis, anything else?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have our Police Department, and Kristen Miller will provide the Police Department's Departmental Services Budget Overview.
Good evening, Council. On behalf of Chief Para, I'm here to present the Police Department's budget. Our department budget is a little over $92 million. 93% of that is allocated for personnel. 7% of that is for our operations. However, I will note that over $4 million of our operations budget is allocated for contracted work, such as street sweeping, animal control, crossing guards, software systems, officer wellness programs, court fees, and our 800 megahertz radio system. This year, fiscally, we've projected a revenue just shy of $6 million. The majority of our revenue comes from parking citation fines. However, we do collect other fines and fees to include report requests, cost recovery, alarm permits, and subpoena fees. We also contract helicopter services with Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, and Irvine. Our jail facility offers a stay-and-pay program where offenders can pay to come serve their sentences in our facility in lieu of a jail facility. We do receive a small funding from the state for training that officers and dispatchers are required to attend. Also, this past year, we've been working with the City Treasurer's Office to improve our ability to accept payments, improve the online payment system to make it more user-friendly. We also anticipate renting out the new training center to other departments. Our training center has the K-9 fields, the simmunitions house, and the gas house. This is our organizational chart. We have five divisions: Special Operations, Patrol, Investigations, Admin Operations, and Support Services. We have 340 full-time employees, 223 of those are sworn, 117 are civilian. Out of those 340 employees, we currently operate with 21 sworn vacancies and 13 civilian vacancies. We do have two recruits in the Police Academy. In addition, we do have 34 part-time employees, of which 12 of those are part of our cadet These are the responsibilities of our divisions outlined here. These are the more frequently performed functions. Our Special Operations includes more specialized units. The Patrol is our most visible division of uniformed officers responding to calls, taking reports, and being proactive in the field. Investigations handles criminal cases usually initiated by patrol. Administrative Operations focuses on internal functions. And Support Services includes most of our civilian units who work alongside officers throughout the department. This is a snapshot of some of our data for calendar year '24. I won't go through each item, but as you look at this, this is a combination of proactive work and citizen-generated requests. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Case?
Just real quick, any ideas on the ability to reduce expenses or create efficiencies that you guys see?
Sure. We have started looking more at training, and instead of sending five people to a training, we'll send one, and that person will come back and present that training in either a briefing or a smaller setting, so we're saving costs that way. We're doing more local schools, taking advantage of those rather than going out of county or out of state.
What about on the revenue side, like any additional revenue-generating opportunities?
So it's hard for a police department to generate revenue, but like I mentioned, in the past, we haven't really collected a lot of fees for the services that we do because it is so—has been so difficult for customers to purchase things online or to come in in a cash-only environment, so working with the City Treasurer's Office, we're expanding our ability to take a variety of payments to increase revenue.
Perfect. What about like our helicopter, I guess, kind of lease program, right, with the neighboring cities when they need air support, they call us as an ability to maybe get some higher rates from them?
Sure. So two years ago, the rate was $800 an hour. This current contract is $850. There is a clause in there to increase that fee should it align more with the actual cost of operating those helicopter services.
And for the residents, can you just tell them which cities use our helicopter system when needed?
Sure. Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, and Irvine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are the fees for aero—is that recoup—does that recoup all our costs at $850?
It's very close.
Helicopter, aero, yeah.
One second. How many cities are we contracted out with?
Three.
Three of them?
Mm-hmm.
Butch, I know, I've got a lot to say.
I just—I want to say just a couple things. First off, I think our Police Department is the best ever. You may or may not know, I'm in the Citizens Police Academy—you're in Citizens Police Academy right now, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. The interactions I've had with just about every department within your department have been unbelievable. Your people are fantastic.
Thank you.
But I want to go—just a quick helicopter question. Do we only receive the $850 an hour if we're requested to go to one of those three cities? Or do we have a prescribed amount of hours we're supposed to—in a 24-hour period—that we're supposed to patrol those cities?
So daily, the aero unit proactively goes to those cities and spends time in there, clocks those minutes, hours, proactively. It's not based on a response. We go there every day to patrol their city.
Just one more thing. Does Laguna Beach still call us if they need us?
Maybe on a mutual aid, but not on a paid proactive.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew.
A quick question. So one of the things that I found fascinating is an asset that the Police Department has, which is the crime lab, specifically the technology piece of it. How many other cities have that?
Have a technology crime lab or a crime lab?
Yeah, where they were—the technology piece where they're kind of breaking through and doing some forensic research into the phones and any other element to help solve some of the crimes?
Specifically, I wouldn't be able to speak to that, but it would be the larger agencies such as Santa Ana, Anaheim, Irvine.
And is that something that we can draw any revenue through to help any of the other smaller cities that don't have that?
So it's difficult to—on an as-needed basis—to charge a department who doesn't have those type of resources, especially if we ask them for mutual aid as well in a variety of areas, who don't charge us, to now charge them, if that makes sense?
Got it, yeah, yeah. So am I correct in assuming, though, that by utilizing it onsite versus shipping it out, we're able to obviously solve crime quicker?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just a quick comment, Mayor. You know, I've been in this city for a long time. There's never been more sirens than ever before, so you can't have a safe city—you can't have a thriving city if you don't have a safe city. In our—as Butch said, our police and fire, our swarms and the departments in totality are amazing, and we should be very grateful. It's a big number, people look at the budget, and they're like, "Wow." But it's money well-spent, it's an investment in safety, and you can't thrive if you're not safe. So with that, thank you to the HBPD.
Thank you.
All right. Travis, does this wrap it up?
Yes, moving on to the next item in the City Managers' Report, which is the homeless update. Lieutenant Roman Altenbach will provide the update.
I'm Jessica Kelly. I and Lieutenant Altenbach oversee the Homeless and Behavioral Health Division of the city. We just released our 2024 Annual Report, which can be found on our city's website, Homeless Solutions page. Just some quick updates on the Social Services side. In 2024, we converted the HB Cares Coordinator position to a full-time social worker position. The Social Services Supervisor oversees our HB Cares and our city's outreach social workers. With the extra social worker, we started housing retention check-ins with specifically identified clients to minimize receiptivism. We implemented the outreach— We implemented the Outreach Grid app for real-time shelter bed referrals. We started bi-weekly case conferencing meetings with our Navigation Center in January of 2024 for efficiency and to help address some of the gaps in services that we were seeing. We also strengthened our partnership with Golden West College. Former Mayor Vandermark held a homeless veterans town hall. We added three HB Cares volunteers, which enabled the ability to enhance programs at our local Huntington Beach Navigation Center, such as sobering support groups, coping skills groups facilitated by a licensed social worker, resume building and job skills training, and recreational activities like bingo and karaoke. Our volunteer licensed marriage and family therapist facilitated de-escalation training with our Huntington Beach Navigation Center staff. And we participated in the pit count and the community chat, which showed a 7% decrease in unsheltered homelessness. I'm now going to go into our 2024 annual report. So a quick overview on this one. Our system of care is comprised of our city's outreach social workers, our homeless task force police officers, B-Well's mobile crisis response team, our wonderful HB Cares volunteers, and our largest component, which is our 174-bed Huntington Beach Navigation Center. This year, we made around 610 shelter referrals. This is to our Navigation Center, other city shelters, county shelters, family shelters, and shelters for survivors of domestic violence. Our city's social workers and Navigation Center moved 78 people to permanent housing this year, in 2024, which was about a 40% increase from 2023. The majority of housing placements were to permanent supportive housing, and others are to rentals with vouchers, rapid rehousing, rentals by clients, room rentals, and family reunifications. B-Well transported 111 people to either a crisis stabilization unit or detox facility. And the Navigation Center held an average occupancy rate of 91%, which was a 2% decrease from 2023, the previous year. This can be explained due to people moving into housing and increased exit times, which can result in other shelter placement. HB Cares volunteers. We currently have 15 HB Cares volunteers answering our Homeless Solutions hotline and facilitating groups at the Huntington Beach Navigation Center. Volunteers donated 750 hours of their time in 2024, which equates to a cost savings of $22,472 for the city. One of our volunteers is a licensed marriage and family therapist. She completed 59 disabling condition forms, which is a necessary document for housing placement within county programs. She was also awarded the Mayor Spotlight Award by former Mayor Vandermark for her dedication to our clients. The Huntington Beach Navigation Center served 406 individuals. In 2024, 82 seniors and 18 veterans were served. 45 individuals were moved from the Navigation Center to permanent housing, which makes up a portion of the 78 individuals overall. An additional four individuals were placed in long-term care facilities such as memory care or assisted living. We offer any guests at the Navigation Center three meals a day, so that resulted in 9,603 meals served in 2024. 5,711 contacts were made in 2024. This includes continual case management by our outreach social workers, calls into our Homeless Solutions outreach line, conferencing with hospitals, school liaisons, and other service providers. The city's social workers made 900, or 293 shelter referrals to our Navigation Center and 326 shelter referrals to other shelters. The average wait time for a shelter bed was less than two days. Our social workers moved 33 people from street-level homelessness to permanent housing. So this is people that maybe the Navigation Center or other shelter settings were not a good fit for them, and they continued to work with them at street level to help them get all their documents in order and qualify for county projects that they were moved into. Our division works very closely with several of our local nonprofit and faith-based groups. These relationships are strengthened by our quarterly collaborative meetings, where we all come together to discuss services and gaps. The community of Huntington Beach is very caring, and through these relationships, we were able to keep at least 11 people from entering homelessness this year through preventative measures such as past due rent being paid for, for a senior who is on a fixed income and found herself with some medical bills and got behind on her rent. We were also able to pay the utilities for another senior who had fallen victim to a phone scam. The social workers worked with her on identifying phone scams, gave her information for the senior center who holds trainings on this, and coordinated with the property management office, who told the senior woman that she can always bring her phone to them, and they will always help her identify if it's a scammer on the other line or somebody that she should be working with. This is not easy work, and these community partnerships are invaluable. We're very grateful for the collaboration. I'm now going to hand it over to Lieutenant Altenbach, who will discuss the Homeless Task Force and B-Well Mobile Crisis Response Team.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. The Homeless Task Force is composed of one sergeant, four officers. Their primary duty is to respond to homeless complaints with, within the city. They do that as part of the entire system of care, which includes Jessica Kelly and her team of the social workers, includes B-Well, it includes the Navigation Center, and it obviously includes enforcement of laws as well. These officers have the ability to offer a wide range of services, which they do. And if a client is willing, they do make shelter referrals. They take people to detox and sobering centers. They work with mental health facilities. At the same time, we don't overlook unlawful behaviors, whether it's narcotic use, theft, stolen property, or any kind of unsanitary or unhealthy situation such as illegal encampments. Having that ability to kind of work both sides of it, where we can enforce the law and at the same time we can address the kind of social aspects of it, has been very beneficial in helping to get people off the streets. The officers themselves referred 67 people to the Navigation Center, which for many people is kind of that first step off the streets to at least some kind of roof over their head, a meal, and work with social workers on a continuing basis. That number obviously doesn't include individuals that we work in partnership with the social workers and her team and their referral stats as well. We also work with businesses and property owners as far as illegal lodging letters and trespass enforcement letters, which is a problem for many property owners because they're not onsite 24 hours a day. And that kind of partnership with the business owners allows us to take enforcement action when we're not there. The officers themselves proactively patrol locations, and we also get dispatched, and that's via dispatch, and the MyHB app. Last year, we responded to 372 complaints that were through the app, and that is something we push because it's an efficient way for the officers, or I should say, the Homeless Task Force officers to get that notification as opposed to going to dispatch, and maybe they're not working, so they handle those. For the first four months of this year, we actually have about a 20% increase compared to the first four months of last year on MyHB complaints submitted. So that's a good sign that people are using it, and we do actively encourage that for that reason. We do work quite closely with the B-Well team. They're a good partner for us because they do a lot of transports that the officers then don't have to do. With them taking people to the CSU facility in Orange, for example, or taking them to the detox facility or things like that. It keeps our officers in the city, so they don't have to do that. It needs to be noted that the B-Well is not just homeless-specific. They respond to really any mental health complaint that they get dispatched to around the city, and they do their own proactive patrolling of areas that are frequented by the people with mental health issues, such as the homeless population. But they have been an amazing partner for us as part of the entire system of care because of that.
If anybody is in need of services and wanting to connect with our social workers, the top right is our office hours. And they can also be reached at our Homeless Solutions hotline, which is 714-536-5576. This concludes our presentation. So if you have any questions, we would love to answer them.
First, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for everything you guys do and are still doing for our city. Remember, when we were campaigning, we couldn't walk through the first three blocks of Main Street without running into maybe five, six homeless people. And there were tents starting to come, be up. One specifically right in the corner of PCH by the 711. And you guys have cleaned downtown, made it better and safer for everyone. But most importantly, the fact that you guys have done that taking a compassionate approach. You're not just pushing people to other cities, telling them to go away. I've seen the work that you guys do and how you connect them to the services, whether it's the preventative measures that you guys take. We have other cities that have come to our city to get tours of our Navigation Center, to talk to you guys so they can use our city as a model for theirs. Because having been one of the, what, one or two cities, only two cities where the homelessness has been reduced, is actually, it's amazing and great. And we're happy that our city is being used as a model for that. Now, I remember, you guys said you guys placed several people in permanent supportive housing. And could you tell us a number from last year, the number of people that were placed in permanent supportive housing last year versus this year?
Yes. In 2023, there was 56 people placed into permanent supportive housing. And in 2024, 78 people. So it's about a 40% increase.
Thank you. And the response is very fast. Every time we call you guys, and you guys give us all your cell number, you guys are always on there. Our guys downtown are always walking around cleaning it up. And I think it's really important to note that our city, being a tourist destination, we rely on tourism, and we want people to keep coming back to our city to say, hey, this is a safe city. Let's bring our family out. And we actually had a couple people send us all an email. Can't remember, was it last year, saying that they hadn't been here in about 10 years because they felt so unsafe, and they just happened to stop by. And they noticed that downtown was so clean that they were going to bring their families back. So that was really important to us. So thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Jessica, can you go back to, I think it's like slide three with the stats? Right there. So Grace touched on it. This was again another campaign pledge that we ran on of combating homelessness. And I know she, myself, and Pat, who ran on this in '22, this is one of our most proudest achievements. Grace touched on it. 78 people in a permanent housing this last year is an all-time record. That's a 40% increase from the year before. We decreased homelessness last year by 7%. Yeah, please. And I brought this up many times. We've done this for hundreds of thousands of dollars less than previous city councils. It's a huge achievement. It's continued success. We get compliments every single week from people saying how much better it is. It's all a testament to you guys. It's all of us working together. Grace, Pat, and I are on the, on the Homeless Task Force meetings. We talk about this almost daily. It's a big issue. It was the number-one concern when we ran in '22 besides identity. It's no longer an issue in the city. We talk to people. We continue at it. We can always get better. We are now, again, just like Streamline HB, we touched on, we're the model city for how to address homelessness. We're really proud of it. It's a huge achievement. And it's thanks to you guys and all of us working together. So we really thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I think that, thank you, guys. Great presentation. Appreciate it. All right. All right. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. And do we have any items? Does any councilperson have a item they'd like to pull?
15, please.
Anything else?
If not, I'd like to move the remaining item.
Okay. All right. We have a first and a second for the remaining items. So 13, 14, and then 16 through 25. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Who was the second?
I was.
Councilwoman Twining?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Groll?
He had to leave.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0-1.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On item 15, just to avoid any appearance of bias or impropriety, because I have a personal friend that was one of the bidders, I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion on 15.
All right. Thank you. Casey, go ahead.
Yeah, Chief. No, this is just something important I wanted to pull, to highlight. So if you can kind of walk the community through this. Again, all dovetails back to our, our budget deficit that we're solving. And this is a great revenue-generating opportunity, getting creative. And I really want to highlight it if you can kind of walk us through.
Thank you.
It's not the annual weed abatement.
So the lifeguard tower ad program is a revenue-generating program from the Fire Department, where our plan is to sell advertising space on 24 of our lifeguard towers. Those ads will be accompanied with beach safety messaging. Some of the revenue from this program will go to the general fund, and then some of the revenue is going to help us to replace some of our aging lifeguard towers.
So on the, I know it came down to, what, like, two bidders, right? And the one we're going with is, is the local group?
Correct.
But they seem to have a much higher, you know, projection on revenue. Do they kind of provide evidence of how they could achieve that over the other group?
Correct. So through the Finance Department, we, we participated in a comprehensive RFP review. Two companies put in. And the company that was chosen was a local HB company. Their revenue estimates were significantly higher than the other company. And they also offered the city a higher split of the revenue.
Perfect. Because we can't see it on this screen, but what are the revenue projections, we think, conservatively, that we can bring in through this advertising program?
Conservatively, our goal is about, we're hoping to hit $1 million this summer with a 70-30 split with the advertising company.
Perfect. I just want to highlight it because it's a really good revenue-generating opportunity. We got creative and looking at all avenues, and this is very, done very tastefully, and it's, it's a good public service. So thank you.
You got it.
All right, Grace?
I also, if I recall correctly, the person that we partnered with, they're Huntington Beach local business as well?
They are. They're located on Main Street.
Okay, great. And also, the people who will be wrapping them will also be local. So we're supporting our local.
I don't know if we have, yes? Yes. So subcontracting a local HB company for the wraps as well. So we'll have two HB companies involved in the process, which is something we're really excited about.
Yes. Supporting our local businesses.
Yes.
I was really excited about that when you guys told me. Thank you.
Done.
And for the residents' clarity, the revenue share, 70-30, is 70% to the city, 30% to the vendor?
Correct. 70, 70% to the city.
Well done.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a move?
Yeah, I moved it.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk? First and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Twining?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 5, 5-1-1.
Okay. We're going to move on to public hearing, item number 26.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We have our, Charles Kovak, our Housing Manager, will provide staff reports.
Thank you, Charles Kovak, Housing Manager. Staff is pleased to submit for your consideration this evening the proposed Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program Funding Recommendations for 2025-26, along with consideration for approval of the 2025-26 Annual Action Plan, which contains the funding, and the 2025 through 2029 five-year consolidation plan. the funding, and the 2025 through 2029 Five-Year Consolidated Plan, and the 2025-29 Orange County Regional Assessment of Fair Housing, and the 2025 through 2029 Citizen Participation The Community Development Block Grant Program, commonly referred to as CGBG, CDBG, and the Home Investment Partnerships Program, referred to as HOM, come to the City of Huntington Beach as entitlement grants from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The city typically is allotted approximately around 1.12 million in CDBG funds and approximately $538,000 in home funds every year. However, the city has not yet received its FY fiscal year 2025-26 CDBG and home funding allocations from HUD yet. Therefore, per HUD direction, the recommendations for funding programs and activities in fiscal year 2025-26 will be based upon the current fiscal year 2024-25 allocations. Once the city receives the funding awards, which we anticipate in the next two weeks, staff will adjust the allocations per the alternatives outlined in the adopting resolution. As part of this annual funding process, the city's Citizen Participation Advisory Board evaluates CDBG public services funding applications and makes recommendations to the city council. The city council and the Citizen Participation Advisory Board held a joint study session on March 18th to review these funding recommendations. To remain eligible for CDBG and home funds, the city is required to prepare every five years a consolidated plan, an assessment of fair housing, and an update to the Citizen Participation Plan. These current documents for the period of 2020 to '24 are set to expire on June 30th, 2025. As a component of the proposed 2025 to '29 consolidated plan, the 2025-26 Annual Action Plan has been prepared outlining how these CDBG and home funds will be used during the upcoming fiscal year, which begins July 1st and ends June 30th, 2026. Following the March 18th study session, the CDBG and home funding recommendations were incorporated into the consolidated plan, and the action plan were made available for public review and comment, along with the proposed Orange County Regional Assessment of Fair Housing and the updated Citizen Participation Plan. The minimum 30-day public review period started on April 4th and ends this evening. The city council has requested to consider and approve the action plan and the other related documents at tonight's public hearing and authorize submission to HUD at a time when the city eventually receives its final CDBG and home allocations from HUD, which, again, we anticipate in mid-May. The consolidated plan examines the city's housing and community development needs and outlines the city's priorities, objectives, and strategies for the investment and use of the CDBG and home funds to address the needs over the next five years. The draft consolidated plan before you this evening for your consideration was developed following HUD's required citizen participation process, which included a series of community workshops and community survey conducted between September and December of 2024. As shown here, the consolidated plan identifies these priority areas. The Annual Action Plan outlines the programs and services proposed to be funded for the first year of the new Five-Year Consolidated Plan. The action plan acts as the budget that is submitted to HUD and identifies funding levels, outcomes, and performance measures, and description of proposed activities. Similar to the discussion at the March 18th study session, the total funding available for CDBG and home next fiscal year is estimated at $2.4 million. The $2.4 million includes the current 2024-25 allocations from HUD, as well as, since we haven't received the 25-26 allocations, along with any carryover funds and program income from previous program years. Carryover funds are unused funds that were previously awarded to other activities. This typically happens when an activity is completed with cost savings leaving a portion of the funding allocation unspent. Program income may, would be repayments on loans previously made using CDBG or home funds. They are typically related to affordable housing or housing rehabilitation loans previously approved by the city council. The slideshow here shows the Citizen Participation Advisory Board's funding recommendations for CDBG public service activities. The CPAB recommends allocating the full amount available under this funding category to the six programs shown here. As previously mentioned, alternatives are proposed by CPAB in the adopting resolution in the event that the HUD allocations are either higher or lower than what is anticipated. It's also shown on the, on March 18th, this slide shows the CDBG capital projects allocations. There are primarily continuing the current programs of tenant-based rental assistance administration, special code enforcement enhancement, ADA improvement project, and the housing rehabilitation program. This year's ADA improvement project consists of the curb and ramp ADA improvements in maintenance zone three. Similar to the public services category, if the 25-26 CDBG allocation is higher or lower than anticipated, then alternatives have been recommended in the adopting resolution. This is basically the CDBG admin, which is 20% maximum of the allocation. So again, it will be adjusted once we know our exact CDBG allocation. Home program funding recommendations are shown here and are based upon continuing the current tenant-based rental assistance, or TBRA, program with Service Provider Families Ford and Mercy House, and the mobile home TBRA program. HUD regulations require that the city also reserve 15% of its home allocation for an eligible community housing development organization, commonly referred to as CHODO, project in the future that can be determined by the city council. And then the balance is for home administration consisting of the maximum 10% of the estimated 25-26 allocation. Plus, I do want to note that in addition to the 25-26 CDBG home administration just described, there is some available unspent home administration funding in the amount of 140,000 from fiscal year 2021 and 21-22 that is available. So this funding is proposed to be used on activities in 25-26, including the following, the preparation of the 26-27 Annual Action Plan, monitoring costs of existing home affordable housing projects, fair housing services, which is a HUD mandated activity, and staff salaries and public noticing for these type of activities. The Citizen Participation Plan outlines the city's policies and procedures to comply with HUD's requirements for citizen involvement in the planning, implementation, and assessment of the city's CDBG and home activities. For example, the Citizen Participation Plan specifically describes the role of the Citizen Participation Advisory Board in the funding process. The Orange County Regional Assessment of Fair Housing was a joint effort of the county and 20 Orange County cities that receive federal funding. The assessment of the fair housing identified reasonable, regional housing constraints, contributing factors to fair housing challenges, and shared goals to guide future planning Finally, the housing rehabilitation loan and grant program provides the much-needed assistance to low-income homeowners to address any health and safety repairs. This program helps preserve the existing housing units, supporting neighborhood quality, property values, and community stability. Staff is requesting that policies and procedures for this program be modified to increase the current maximum grant limit from 15,000 to 20,000 to account for rising labor and construction material costs. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council conduct this evening's public hearing on the 25-26 Action Plan, the 2025-29 Consolidated Plan, the 25-29 Orange County Regional Assessment of Fair Housing, the updated Citizen Participation Plan, and consider adoption of resolution number 2025-32 approving these documents, along with the increase in the maximum grant funding in the housing rehabilitation program to $20,000. And that concludes the presentation. Staff is available for any questions you may have.
You recommended that we have the public hearing, but this is it, right?
Yes, yeah, this is, if anybody should choose to, I'm not sure if he submitted, but he need to open and then close.
Okay, but does anyone have any ex parte communication to disclose? Or does council members have any questions on the report? Then we'll open the public hearing. City Clerk, do you have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have one speaker and one supplemental communication. The supplemental communication is for item number 26, letter of support received from Senator Strickland regarding pathways to independent grant application to the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG Program. And our speaker is Marlene Bronson.
Is she, Marlene, are you here? It does not seem we have Marlene here, so we do not have any speakers.
We have no, we have no public speakers.
Okay, then the public hearing was open and it is now closed. Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion as recommended.
Second.
City Clerk? Please call a roll.
Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item 27, administrative public hearing. Public hearing on authorization for the 2025 Annual Weed Abatement Program. Jimmy?
Yes, good evening, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, my name is Jimmy Hong with Code Enforcement, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. So tonight, we are having an annual weed abatement public hearing. And just a brief recap on the program, back on April 1st, 2025, the city council adopted resolution number 2025-19 to declare weeds, rubbish, and refuse on certain properties to be a public nuisance. The affected properties were identified through research and field inspections. In between May, correction, between April 2nd through 25th, notices were posted on affected properties and letters were mailed to the property owners. Tonight is a public hearing to hear any objections to the program. By May 20th, property owners are asked to clear their, the weeds from the properties. And between May 22nd through June 6th, the city will commence abatement effort, abatement efforts on properties not cleared by the property owners. And by July 15th, the cost per parcel will be posted on the council bulletin board. By August 10th, the city council will be asked to certify the clearing cost to be on the inclusion for the county tax roll for the years '25 through '26 tax roll. So for tonight, staff is recommending the city council open up a public hearing to hear any objections to the program and to authorize the director of Public Works to proceed with nuisance abatement. And that concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, does, oh, okay.
Are we going to bill the property owners that don't respond? I don't know if I heard that or not, but if they don't clear their property themselves, will we bill them?
Yes, staff will conduct a reinspection, Councilmember Twining, to confirm that there's still weeds on the property. After May 20th, they're required to clear it. If not, we'll do the reinspection to confirm that there's still weeds, and then we'll have a city contractor commence the abatement.
And then the city will charge property owner
Yes, correct.
for the cost to the weed abatement.
Okay, does any, does any council member have any ex parte communications disclosed on item 27? Okay. Any other questions on this? All right. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We have no speakers.
We have one.
We have one.
Okay, individuals, let me give you the notice. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on this item scheduled for public hearing may do so filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. You got the full three.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that greatly. City Council, I actually rise in support of this item. I think that it's imperative to make sure that we keep our city clean and free of nuisance, including rubbish and weeds. I do have a couple concerns, though, and I want to tell you where they're stemming from. Back in 2017, I spoke at another city council meeting, and one of your former colleagues, Billy O'Connell, had brought forth a agenda item talking about wanting to do a program to have organic compounds, to have weed abatement. And at the time, it was passed, and then it kind of just fell by the wayside. But at that meeting, I rose in support of his agenda item. And I, I talked about the fact that the Ocean View School District that I represent since 2012, I'm actually in my 13th year, it's my fourth term serving the wonderful children of the Ocean View School District, parents, taxpayers, and community members, including some of you. I spoke about the fact that at the Ocean View School District, I spearheaded an initiative to make sure that we are no longer using any kind of caustic pesticide or herbicide to kill weeds and that we would only use organic compounds to do so. And that's because of the fact that we have, obviously, 8,000 children on our properties every single day, and we have pets, and we have folks that bring their pets and so forth. And I would just ask that you, before you move forward with doing any contracting, engage the contractor about what kind of herbicides you're going to use. I think it's imperative that you take action to make sure that the cleanest chemical is used, because residents are counting on you to make sure that you don't pollute and poison our community. I ask you on behalf of the 8,000 children of the Ocean View School District to do this. Please. Our health depends on you. Thank you so much for your consideration. Good night.
All right, that, no other speakers? So the public hearing is now closed. Any discussion from council on this? Nope, okay. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Can you please call a roll?
Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero.
Okay, we are going to move on to council member items. And number 28, going to be presented by council member Going to be presented by Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, on July of 2020, the Huntington Beach City Council adopted the Group Homes Ordinance, amending the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance and municipal code. The Group Homes Ordinance established regulations for group homes, sober living homes, residential care facilities, striking a balance between the interest of the city, its residents, and residents of group homes. Effective implementation of the city's Group Homes Ordinance has been hampered due to a number of sober living homeowners, operators who are either operating without the required permits, or are in violation of the conditions outlined in their existing permits. Unpermitted or noncompliant facilities create public safety issues, neighborhood quality of life issues, and the level of care being provided to residents of group homes is compromised when the law is not followed. Mayor Burns and I, we request the city attorney and city manager draft an amendment of the current Group Homes Ordinance to ensure greater accountability among sober living homeowners and operators. The intent is to amend the Group Home Ordinance to prevent operators and owners from applying or reapplying for permits for five years once they have been found to be operating unlawfully. The recommended action is to direct the city manager and city attorney to amend the Group Home Ordinance to prevent owner-operators, owners and operators, from applying or reapplying for group home permits for five years once they have been found to be operating unlawfully, and agendize the ordinance for planning, commission review, and city council review and final approval.
All right, I'll make that motion, but I want to amend it to include the property itself, just not the operators or the home. I think the property, so they don't go and switch names on us real, within a week or something, fill that home up again fraudulently. So that'd be my only amendment, but I'd make that motion to carry as recommended.
And I would second that motion. So you're saying to include the actual address?
Yes, sir.
I second that motion, Mayor.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Twining?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Oh, we're going to have a little addition along those lines before we move on by Councilman Kennedy, just to educate the public on some of the noticing.
Very quickly, I worked with our staff, our community development, Mayor Burns, and we created a document that will soon be published on the city website. Basically, an informed resident is a vigilant resident. So what this document will do, as you can see on the screen, it delineates the type of group homes, the types of buffering required, the types of permits required, how many employees they can have. There's hyperlinks to where you can check addresses to make sure a state licensed facility is state licensed, it shows you if it's current, who it is, and what entity. So there's a matrix, so it's a very comprehensive document which shows you the Huntington Beach zoning map, showing you what zone these addresses are in, hyperlink, the zoning, the state license requirements, the state license search, so it's a comprehensive document. An informed public is a vigilant public, that's why this document's been created, it will be posted to the website, and I would encourage residents to download the document, hand it to your neighbors, inform your neighbors, and let's be vigilant. There's also the code enforcement number on the document, and that is where you start to bring awareness to people that you believe are not operating lawfully. It's a great document, and thank you, Dan, for creating this document, it looks great.
All right, let's move on to item number 29, presented by Councilmember Williams.
All right, thank you guys for the opportunity to present this, and I want to commend the investigative work of Mark Bigsby from Surf City Sentinel, because had it not been for his January 28 post, I don't think that any of this would have ever gotten my attention, where he wrote that Joe Draxovich, who is apparently the treasurer for Friends of the Huntington Beach Public Library, has formed a primarily formed PAC, that's a political action committee, called Our Library Matters, to support the two library initiatives. And so regarding Friends of the Library, something that I learned that maybe many of the public do not know, is that they are not actually part of the public library in the sense that when you go to go donate books at the public library, you're not donating them to the library, you're actually donating them to Friends of the Library. And we, as a city, are actually completely in the dark in terms of what type of funds are coming through. But we do know that they are sitting on a windfall of cash into the millions of dollars based off of these Form 990 filings, and you'll see in this 990 filing on the screen that they are registered as a tax exempt 501(c)(3). Next slide, you'll see off of their website, May 6, this is in their About section. Again, they affirm the fact that Friends of the Huntington Beach Public Library is a California 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. Going to the next slide, this is off the IRS.gov website, the question being asked in the red there. May a Section 501(c)(3) organization make a contribution to a political organization described in Section 527, such as a candidate committee, political party committee, or political action committee? The answer, no. A Section 501(c)(3) organization may not make a contribution to a political organization described in Section 527, such as a candidate committee, political party committee, or political action committee. Going to the next slide, we have a political action committee of interest called Citizens for Good Governance, and you'll see that they are filing as a general purpose committee, and the filing date is from February 18, 2024 through June 30, 2024. And again, they are a general purpose committee. You have another filing from them, from covering the period of July 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024. Again, they are filing this Form 460 as a general purpose committee, which begs the question, then what were they doing during this filing time? Well, now we have here, August 27, 2024, in the next slide, Friends of the Huntington Beach Library donating $6,006.97. Going to the next slide, October 18, 2024, this 501(c)(3) Friends of the Library is donating to this general PAC committee, $10,733.18. Going to the next slide, you have November 22, 2024, Friends of the Library donates $2,515.67, and then in the same day, they donate another tranche of $3,814.37. I think it begs the question, what are they doing with this money? And note the filing date, this is for July 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024. Well, part of the way that Citizens for Good Governance is spending this money is on political candidates at that time, in the same exact filing period of July 1 through December 31, 2024. You have these candidates here that they supported. You have Rhonda Bolton, Dan Kalmick, and I believe Natalie Moser, who is present here, and they supported them with $1,876 in yard signs. Furthermore, this same group, Citizens for Good Governance, is then donating $5,000 to a new political action committee, Our Library Matters, that's involved in an election that is aiming to change legislation currently in our city. Next slide, you have April 26, 2025, Citizens for Good Governance, that was the recipient of a large amount of money from Friends of the Library, donates yet again $5,000 to Library Matters, that is trying to repeal legislation in our city. And then finally, May 1, 2025, Citizens for Good Governance donates yet again $8,500 to Our Library Matters. So by way of reminder, based off of the last Form 990 filing that we have from Friends of the Library, they are a 501(c)(3), and you'll see that the treasure that they have here, Joe Draxovich, just as Mark Bigsby had reported, the same treasure you have here for Friends of the Library, is the same treasure you find on the final receiving end, Our Library Matters, Joe Draxovich. And just out of curiosity, based off their last Form 990, it says at the very bottom there, did the organization, going to the next couple slides down, same treasure, same treasure. Next slide, did the organization engage in a direct or indirect political campaign activities on behalf of or in opposition to candidates for public offices? Their response to the right is no. And then, just a matter of weeks ago, we met with representatives of Friends of the Library with their lawyer present, and I asked if Friends of the Library has donated to any political action committees? His response was no, and then he followed up with, why would you be asking that? And so with that said, I would like to move this item as recommended, approve the mayor to work with the city attorney to file complaints on behalf of the city council with the California Fair Political Practice Commission and the Internal Revenue Services regarding suspected campaign finance and charitable law violations.
I will second that, but with the comment that, I think it's, as much as this looks suspicious, I think it also is due to, I know, as a former policeman, I always liked to seek exoneration too, because I always feared putting somebody in jail that was truly innocent. I think that's, would be a terrible thing, so it's equally important that if this is out there, that if they are innocent, that we also prove that they be innocent. So if they've done something wrong, well, they better, they have to answer it, but if they're innocent, I would like to prove that too. Anybody else have any comment? All right, it's been first and second, can we please?
I would actually just say something, I was in that meeting as well, and I remember clearly asking, have you guys donated to any PACs?
Yes.
And they said no. If there's any wrongdoing here, I'd like to know, if there isn't, I'd like to know as well, so I will be supporting this.
All right, then, it's been first and second, please call a roll.
Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, would any council member like to add any new business to the next agenda? I'll make the motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Financing Authority is Tuesday, May 20, 2025, at the Central Library, 7111 Talbert Avenue, Huntington Beach, California, 92648. We are adjourned.